The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now called to order. Councilman Bradford will be giving up the application and Councilman Lynch will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let us bow. Gracious God, we come again. Thank you for your many blessings. As we come, Lord, we ask your presence within the Shreveport City Council meeting. We ask you to direct our minds and our hearts as we transition the business of this city. We ask your blessings upon the leadership of this city, our mayor, our council members, and all those that protect the governance of this city. We pray, Lord, that we can continue to make Shreveport a better city where everybody will have the opportunity to live, work, go to school, and safety. Thank you for your blessings. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us face the flag and repeat the pledge in unison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clinton, call the roll, please.
Councilman Bradford. Councilman Albertson.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Corbin.
President. President.
Here.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
There is, Mr. Chairman. Second?
It's been moved by Councilman Corbin, second by Councilman Bradford. Please vote. Motion carried. Any awards? Does any council member have any awards of recognition of distinguished guests?
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Mr. Chairman, I would like to acknowledge and recognize and ask him to come forward whereas he's no stranger actually to the Northwest Louisiana Technical College, but he is the new dean and proud to have known that he had been promoted to that position. So actually Dean Gerald Joshua is in the audience and I'd like him to come forward. Let's congratulate him on his new appointment. Mr. Dean, tell us a little about how you see the college.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. It's our Honorable Mayor and the distinguished panel of council. I am Gerald Joshua and I am the newly elected dean, as Councilman Bradford stated. For over eighty years, Northwest Louisiana Technical College has been adding to the Shreveport Boister workforce. We've been known by several names, VOTEC, Louisiana Technical College, and now Northwest. But even though we had name changes over the years, our mission has always remained the same, and that is to provide quality employees for prospective employers. In other words, workforce development. And that's what it's all about. And we believe the best way to change the community is one person at a time by empowering them with the education and the passion to succeed. And that's my vision for Northwest Louisiana Technical College for the next eighty-plus years, and I do plan to be there. But we want to focus on being innovative. We have new programs that we're introducing such as the Industrial Maintenance Program and some of our other programs, that's the nursing and IT. And we were about to close our barber styling program, but we were able to keep it. So I'm happy to say that our barber styling program is not closing because we've also added to that workforce. But I appreciate you giving me this time. I look forward to continuing to partner with the city. And whatever we can do to make our students marketable will be our chief task. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dean.
Not so fast, Dean. You got me wanting to go and take up a class or something up there.
I have a passion for it.
I tell you, what's your background?
I'm a graduate of Southern University. I'm originally from Donaldsonville, Louisiana, which is a small southern town. I served in the corporate world for about sixteen years. I was a financial sales consultant for GMAC. And they closed my office here in Shreveport and wanted me to move to Detroit. Didn't want to move because at the time, my wife was a senior accountant for GM. And we have two boys. When I left GMAC, I went to work at Northwest Louisiana Technical College as the director of financial aid. And after working in that capacity for about four years, I was promoted to the PR person and also worked in admissions. Worked in there for about another four years. And then I was promoted to assistant campus dean. So I've been working as the campus dean in this capacity for the last six months.
Well, congratulations.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, just one quick question. I'm just asking for a friend. You have any single friends?
Do I have any single? Well, we have some fraternity brothers.
Okay.
So we may be able to work something out.
What fraternity is that?
Alpha Phi Alpha.
Now, I was a sphinx with Sweetheart back in 1982, I have you on today.
Okay. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Joshua.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm thinking before I say this, I might ought to ask Doc Voorhees to stand up because he has certainly out-Motograwd everybody.
All the parades.
I do want to congratulate all the crews as we come to the end of carnival season for a job well done and the work that they do in and about the city. And especially want to thank Shreveport Police, Shreveport Fire, Public Works, Spar, and all the other folks that contribute to the multiple parades and the cleanup from those parades. And, you know, we had two major parades in one day, one downtown and one on the Parkway. And this was a very compact and short Motograwd season this year. Everything happened within just a couple of weeks. And just job well done to everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lynch?
Yes, I wanted to ask Alan with Sportran to come up. This week, they will be coming back to the community to discuss the new Sportran bus system with the community. And I think we've all received a flyer, and it's a pretty aggressive schedule, pretty aggressive schedule that you all have, but it's one certainly where it looks like, you know, citizens will have every opportunity to give feedback, you know. We've got morning meetings, we've got evening meetings, sometimes a couple of times a day. So I just wanted you to kind of let the public know what to expect.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council. We're about three months into our new routes. And so it's been a lot of learning for citizens, but we wanted to give everybody a chance to get in, learn the routes, learn the schedules, and then bring people together so we can get their feedback in a structured way. We've had a lot of conversations with passengers at the terminal, over the phone, but if we can get everybody together kind of in a way that we can do a presentation and then take some feedback. We're still looking to make some more changes to the routes and the schedules. We're looking to do that over the next several months, but using this as a tool to get feedback and make sure that citizens are involved in the process. So we have nine meetings scheduled for next week, different areas of town, different times a day. When we did our meetings last year, we did most of them in the evening, but we tried to do some in the day as well. This time, we've got more in the day to get more people. We've had posters out on the buses for a couple of weeks now about these. We've been passing out flyers. Anyone who calls in and is giving us feedback on the routes or has issues, we've been letting them know about the meetings coming up. And we put it on social media, and we're going to continue to promote it through our text messaging system and other means over the next few days and into next week as we start the meetings.
As you know, I've been getting, probably all of us have been getting a lot of feedback, you know, about the new system. And I certainly just really want to commend you all, although all of the ones, you know, that are in my district are still, you know, evolving in terms of what, you know, it'll ultimately look like. But I would like to commend you all for all the hard work that you all have done. I think, you know, given the amount of changes that have occurred, you all have handled it really well.
Thank you.
You know, and taken the feedback, made adjustments, you know, that you could make, you know, sooner than this process, but are still open to making other changes. And, I mean, I got a call this morning, a second call from a citizen, but, you know, I felt confident in being able to express to her that we were doing everything, you know, that we could to hear the concerns and to make adjustments, you know, that could be made and that that process, you know, will continue. Invited her to the meeting.
Thank you.
You know, I got some extra flyers to make, you know, to make sure they're in the libraries and the Spar centers in my district because I really want people to weigh in. And if you're able to make one of the meetings, please do so. I mean, it's just to complain and not come to give your input, you know, we really do want the input, right?
We really do. And like I said, we've gotten some ad hoc feedback from people, but this gives us a structured way to take that and make sure that it's something we can act on. And we are going to continue to make changes, tweak things. We knew when we started out three months ago that it wasn't going to be perfect. We made two rounds of changes already. The first one was primarily to schedules, then we made a couple of route changes, and there's going to be more changes coming, but we feel like we're settling in. But there are some things that we still want to hear from the citizens about so we can get them right.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And if I could, just before you go, I do want to echo what Councilwoman Lynch said and express, a lot of my constituents have been happy with the responses that they've gotten for the various questions. And I know that when you make a change of this magnitude, there are a lot of questions. And I feel like, especially in the first few months, I was sending a lot of people to y'all's doorstep, but they got answers and they felt more comfortable. And I think initially, what may have been criticism has now turned into maybe some helpful suggestions and/or still kind of getting their feet wet. So I think that this is such a welcome opportunity, and I appreciate that y'all are doing it so that you can get some feedback as the process goes. But you may want to even go back in another six months. I mean, I think some people are still kind of getting accustomed to it, and it's going to take them a little bit to really see what works for them or not, just like it probably does for y'all. But the effort is noticed and appreciated by my constituents, I believe.
Thank you, yeah. A lot of the changes we've made have been based on citizen suggestions that were like, oh, yeah, we should have thought of that. Very good feedback from citizens. We're now on Google Maps. That's a big thing for us. People can plan their trips on Google Maps, and so that's a new tool for people, either through the Google Maps app or going online and say, I want to start here, I want to go here. It'll tell you exactly what routes, the times, and everything, so it's a very handy tool and something that's going to make the system easier to navigate for people.
So you're going to show me and Flurry how to do that, right?
Absolutely.
And the first meeting is going to be Monday, February the 19th, at Airport Park. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Flurry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, at this time, I have a recognition of a guest that I would like to share with you all. I'd like to recognize, at this time, Mr. Mason Bass, who is a seventh grader at Yuri Drive Middle School. Mason, stand up there for me. With Mason is his mother, Ms. Hope Bass, and his grandparents, Mr. and Mrs. James Gilchrist. Would y'all please stand? I want to recognize this young man, and he asked me, he had made one request, and I said, I'm going to do everything I can to try to help him. He said, can I please meet my mayor? Mayor Tyler, would you so kind to go down? Mayor, could he get his picture made with you there? Thank you.
We'll get you, send you one, yeah.
I want to tell you about Mason. In October of 2017, Mayor, he received first place for his oratory public speaking contest leadership speech to the Southern Association of Student Councils. Fifteen states represented in the junior high division in Orlando, Florida. In January of 2018, Mayor, he came in third place at the oratory public speaking contest leadership speech in the Louisiana Association of Student Council. I think we would need to give Mason a big round of applause.
I hope we can hear from him. Such a great orator.
Mason, we are so delighted that you were able to make your first city council meeting, and we look forward to you doing great things in life, in politics. So thank you for being here.
Would it be okay if we asked Mr. Bass to come up and speak to the council? Y'all okay with that? Can you come up and speak?
Not used to a microphone like this. Hello?
Hello.
So what do you want me to do, my speech?
I want you to just to tell us a little bit about-
Well, he kind of covered a lot of it, but I write my speeches with the help of my grandmother, my mom, mainly my grandmother, but my mom helps with the back half. Kind of helps me get through the bottom. It takes probably, for my one in 2017 in Orlando, it took me about two months to learn that one, and they had to be completely memorized, no notes, so, in five minutes. But the one in 2018 for LAFC, I learned in a week, so it's probably why I placed third. And, but I ended up getting it because I had to redo it a couple of times and made it a little more funny than the first one, so. Anything else?
How was the competition? What was the competition like? Were you nervous?
Not, I was nervous the second time more than the first one because I knew it wasn't, I didn't know it as well. But I would say this, I wasn't as nervous to go in front of the crowd. I was, well, yeah, I wasn't that nervous as I thought I would be to go in front of the crowd as I thought I would be because it was 1,500 people.
How many?
1,500.
You know, I've always found, I think, that a crowd of that size, when you get larger than like a few hundred people, you can't see their faces anymore. I think it's harder to talk to like 20 people.
My teacher just told me to look over the head. Lights up on your face, so.
Yeah, there you go. It looks like you're looking at all of them, but you're not looking at any of them.
By the way, you have somebody on your row there who's famous for his ability to recite the Declaration of Independence and the "I Have a Dream" speech, so he may have a few techniques for you if you're looking for a memorization technique.
I might just be looking, so.
Mason, you're principal, Ms. Guerrero is a good friend of mine, and I'm going to brag on you.
Thank you.
When I see her later this week.
Thank you.
You're in way better shape than I'm in. I've been coming down here for a little bit over three years, and I get nervous every time I open the door, and I don't have to say but 10 to 15 words, so you way ahead of me.
So you know, being a student council could one day have you up here, right?
Yes, and I very much want to be in one of those positions. And I'm very, just very honored to be able to come down here, and just so amazing.
Well, we're honored to have you. I know at one time, maybe Art couldn't, since he's been here long enough. The city council had a youth council at one time, I believe. Darren Jackson was the councilperson, I think that was he the one that put that together? I know at one time, the city council had a youth council.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact name.
I'm not really sure. We may need to revive that because, I mean, we've just had some awesome, awesome young people to come through here, and we want to keep an eye on them. We want to see, you know, how and when and where we can use them to, you know, further be ambassadors for our city. And, you know, peer to peer, you know, people look at us, but, you know, peer to peer, I think a lot of young people would definitely be inspired by someone like yourself. So thank you so much for being such a great ambassador of our city.
Thank you.
Mason, also, I wanted to be sure you knew that our mayor served as principal of that school. Mayor, is that correct?
I sit on a bench every day where your name is engraved on it. And I just think, my, 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 where I could go.
Thank you, Mason. Thank you so much.
Mayor Tyler, would you have some words?
I would like to say congratulations to Mason, and I just want to tell you how proud we are as Shreveport citizens to have you representing us across the nation in your endeavor. And also, I want to recognize the people who are behind the support, behind you, that support you in your endeavors every single day. Will your parents and grandparents, whomever, please stand? Let us give them a hand. I want to say thank you so much. It does take the family to be able to help our young people achieve their dreams, so thank you for what you do for our community and for your child. Thank you, Mason, and keep on keeping on, and you will be the leader that you dream about. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I'm very honored to stand in front of y'all today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other. Members of the council, I want to call to your notice that Mr. Alton Pop Marvin Owens passed away, and his funeral was just recently. The significance about Mr. Owens is that he served forty-one and a half years with Sportran, going back to the electric trolley. He was a very dedicated employee, and I just wanted to use this opportunity to let you know that I shared on behalf of the city council that, at his funeral, that we thanked him for his service to the city. Thank you. That's all I have.
At this point, Doc Voorhees, if you want to come up and give us a little public service announcement at this point, we would welcome that, particularly tired as you are.
Well, I'll leave the rest of the costumization there. But it is definitely an honor to stand before you and the mayor and the city council, and I'm just so excited about the things that's happening in Shreveport. Very, very positive, you know, the good relationship we have between the city council and the mayor, and the roads are just phenomenal. And to see good people get promoted, as brother Joshua has just gotten promoted, it's exciting. And of course, I'm costuminized because of the day, and this is an economic engine for this area, so I want to celebrate it. But I'm here to talk about Paint Your Heart Out 2018, and it's that time again, and I've gotten, I think each one of you have an application. The applications were due the last of January, but we've extended it because we want to make sure that, you know, we've got over a thousand volunteers, that anybody that qualifies would like to have their house painted, the senior citizens, we want to be able to do that. You know, one of my great disappointments is to have a service and to have someone that needs that service and they not connect. And so we want to make sure those connections are made. You know, we're working with the ministers, I've sent communications out to all them. We're working with fraternities, just the neighborhood associations to make sure we get the word out. And Paul Pratt is our chairperson this year, and he's excited, and this is my fifth year as co-chair. We raise, on the average, about $30,000 from the private sector in addition to the city generous effort. But I just want to make sure that you are aware of the program and where we are with it. We're very excited, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Tell me that extended deadline one more time.
It's the end of the month. It's extended to February the 28th, and they didn't extend it to the 28th just because it's my birthday. But, you know, if y'all want to annotate that somewhere. But it is extended until the 28th, and the inspectors and everything have been super, you know, accommodating, making the adjustments so they can get those inspected as quickly as possible. So, you know, we're excited, and just to, you know, have over a thousand volunteers to come out every year is just phenomenal. It speaks to the city and the spirit of the city, and we're just excited.
And, you know, I've often wondered, now, I know this isn't a question for you, Doc, so just, you can just tell me if you think it's a good idea. But I've often wondered with programs like this, now that we have a little bit better access to data on, in the various governmental departments, if we might be able to better identify who are eligible recipients of a program like this? You know, because in the past, of course, we spent a lot of time trying to get the word out there and draw attention to Paint Your Heart Out, both so that we get the great volunteers, which we always get great volunteers. But we also try to get well-qualified applicants that need the service really well, and sometimes that's harder. Sometimes the people who need these type of services, they don't, you know, get out as much, or they might not, you know, have as wide of a social network as some people do. And, but I wonder if there might be a way to work with like the assessor's office, you know, and find out who are those people who have their taxes frozen so we know that they're over a certain age, we know that they're homeowners, we know, you know, those certain things. And so before I ride off into the sunset for my time with council, I would love to later this year, maybe after the event, maybe we could sit down and kind of look at-
We'd love to.
Is there a way we can better identify who could receive this type of thing so we can make sure and get the best benefit out of it?
You know, and the council's been very, very supportive and personally, you know, identified some individuals as well, and of course Bonnie Moore and her staff have just been super, super, super. But, you know, I think we need to do everything humanly possible to identify those individuals because for obvious reasons, they are less likely to come out, you know, they're frail, they're senior citizens, they're not as electronic savvy, you know, the reason goes on and on. But I think anything we can do to identify them would be a plus.
Well, thank you so much. And just another thing to the general public who may be listening, if you haven't volunteered for Paint Your Heart Out before, it is so much fun and such a great way to meet people, doing service in that way is just such a good way to work alongside somebody. In the past, I've, you know, met groups of people who are, you know, a social club or a group from the base or, you know, groups from a particular place of employment. I mean, it varies, but every group of people that I've had a chance to work alongside was somebody who I pretty much didn't know at all before, and by the end of it, you really get to know them well. It's a lot of fun, and it's just a good way to spend some time and give back to your community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Flurry.
Mayor Tyler, any more, any other communication?
Yes, sir. I do need to make one or two announcements, but I want to recognize Dr. Adrienne Critcher. She was unable to be here yesterday for the conversation on appointments. Can you please come up, Dr. Critcher, and have words about your reappointment to the Greater Shreveport Human Relations Committee?
Thank you, Mayor Tyler, and hello Chairman Bowman and Vice Chairman Jenkins and city council members. Sorry I wasn't able to be here yesterday, but I appreciate being considered for reappointment to the Human Relations Commission. I've been the chair since it began, and we're really proud of the work we've done. We have developed policies and procedures. We have a very good grievance policy that emphasizes mediation. To this date, we have had no formal grievances filed. Our goal is really preventative rather than punitive. We feel that by the city council enacting what we've called the fairness ordinance, that sort of puts people on notice that Shreveport is a place that welcomes everybody who wants to work hard and contribute to our city. And it just lets people know that that's our standard, and I think it's aspirational in that people try to live up to that. Our mediation procedures are in place because we feel like oftentimes when discrimination does take place, it's not done out of malice. A lot of times, it's done out of ignorance. And so we have procedures in place that first let us sit down with parties that are involved to try to reconcile things. We haven't had formal grievances filed yet, but we have had some inquiries. We've had some things brought to our attention. Most of them have not been discrimination claims. One was, one was. But we were able to talk to the parties involved, we were able at times to direct people to the parties they needed to talk to, and so we're able to handle those without a grievance. But we are prepared to do that. We have a strong, diverse group of people on our commission who are all committed, who have- have good hearts, and they all want to see our city succeed. And they want to see us be one Shreveport and come together to work together. And I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yes.
And congratulations on your reappointment. I know your commitment to this-
Thank you.
-commission. And I was happy to hear that you feel like y'all have, have worked out all the scenarios in which you could be more effective-
We do.
...in, in addressing the, the issues that come before you.
Mm-hmm.
How often do you meet?
We really meet as, as required. When we have business at hand, we, we don't, we, we don't have regular meetings. Last year, we had, we didn't have as many meetings last year as we've had in the past because we were in the process of getting our members reconfirmed. You may not be aware, when we were originally commissioned, we staggered the terms so that everybody wouldn't go off at the same time. And so, we were in the process of getting a lot of those reconfirmed last year. So, so we had to get that done to take care of business. But we've had people come talk to us to give some educational seminars. We've talked to fair housing people. So, we've really tried to educate ourselves. We've been interviewed by the media. Jackie Jovit came and, and filmed us one time and had a nice, a nice coverage on TV about us. And so, we feel like we're trying to get the word out that we're here and we're here to serve.
And, and that leads me to what you just said on my next question, which is, do you offer yourself to be mediators within certain aspects of, of, of community needs?
You know, we, we haven't done that. We haven't offered ourselves to mediate. But, you know, I think we would probably be willing to, to do that and be willing to talk to people.
Is that part of the initial organizational equation?
You know, our commission says we are in place to educate and to work within the community. So, I think that if people are interested in talking to us about that, that, that we, I think that falls within our mission.
Sure. And how, how would they know? How, what's the-
We have a great website.
Okay.
All you have to do really is Google Shreveport Greater, or just Shreveport Human Relations Commission. So, we're on the city's website. There are links. HowdoI, there's a link to us. And if you just Google it, we come up and it's a really clear website. Jamila Masiki did a great job here in the city's IT department of following the, the requests that we had and, and so I think it's a real clear, real clear website that's easy to navigate.
Okay. And as previously stated by our previous speaker in that, some, some of our citizens are not social media savvy. How, is there alternative ways in which they could get the word?
You know, it, it can be difficult to find out about us perhaps if you're not, if you don't watch TV or you're not on, on, can't access a computer. But to file a grievance, all someone has to do is call the mayor's office. And the mayor's office can mail them a grievance form and so they don't, they don't have to have access to a computer to file a grievance.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Jenkins.
And I'll just thank you for your willingness to continue to serve.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations on what y'all have been able to accomplish. I mean, you really have gotten all the structure in place that you need to, to handle tough situations and you've been able to sort of preemptively deal with those that came at you while you were doing that.
Right, right, yes. We've tried to do that. And you know, we've gotten some nice national publicity. There have been places, there have been articles that talk about cities that have non-discrimination ordinances and we're sort of unusual for the size town we are in a southern city. And so, people are sort of pleasantly surprised. My goodness, Shreveport, Shreveport has this. A lot of people have stereotypes in mind when they think of small, smaller southern cities. And so, we are counteracting that and that's especially important for young people. They consider these kinds of things important markers and signifiers of a city's openness to everyone. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Critcher.
Thank you, Mayor Tyler.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, our announcements for today are, and I think Councilman Corbin's already made this announcement. I want to say thank you to our employees who worked to make certain that all of our matinee parades went well. We had a great season. A lot of people really, really came out to enjoy it. Also, our thirtieth annual African-American parade was very successful and it was a, a big win again this year. But I wanted to say thank you to all of the employees and all of the citizens who participated in these parades. These parades offer a quality of life in our community that they don't, that a lot of cities do not have. And so, it's important for us to keep it going. It's a lot of work, but SPAR, Public Works, Shreveport Police Department, Shreveport Fire Department, and other employees work diligently to ensure that these quality of life activities are afforded to our citizens. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you, Councilman Bradford, other council members who came out to our press conference for the reopening of Andrew Curry Community Center and for the announcement of the new bicycles for the Shreveport Police Department to patrol our downtown area and festival events. And I want to again thank our community partners who donated to both of these efforts. But thank you so much for the support that you give to these activities, certainly that we are able to get partners to come to the table and help us be able to address the needs of our citizens. Last week, we took time out to honor our city sanitation workers and join with cities across the, the country this month that recognized the nineteen sixty-eight tragic deaths of those who inspired the Memphis sanitation strike. And I know, you know, February first was a national day to honor sanitation workers across our nation. So, we did that and read a proclamation. Today, SPAR will be recognizing National Therapeutic Recreation Month at five-thirty PM at Riverview Hall during SPAR's therapeutic recreation two thousand and eighteen matinee ball. I'll be going there just to read the proclamation and then I'll leave there going to Family Hour for Mr. Larry Ramsey. But we wanted to let you know that this month is National Therapeutic Recreation Month where we have those people with disabilities that are recognized and certainly we try to offer this type activity for all of our citizens. And so, the five-thirty hour was mentioned on purpose because I'll leave about ten after five. Maybe we'll be through by then. I want to also ask the community to keep, once again, the family of Kettle Parish School Board member, Mr. Larry Ramsey, in our prayers and in our thoughts. Of course, Mr. Ramsey, we said to you on yesterday, passed away on last Saturday. His services will be held at two PM on Wednesday at Christ United Methodist Church, twelve oh four Crap Apple Drive. He's been a friend, a colleague, and a public servant in this community probably more than thirty years, but I've known him, known him about twenty-five years. And as a school board member, we worked together diligently to improve the lives of the students in our school system. I want to invite everyone to the upcoming community meeting on our Phase Two of Bike Paths. On yesterday, we did make that announcement. The meeting will be held at five-thirty on Thursday, February fifteenth, at Central Art Station, eight oh one Crockett Street. A new initiative in twenty seventeen led to the creation of Pilot Bike Paths in the Highland Neighborhood. The twenty thirty Great Expectations Master Plan identified a need for bike paths in our city. The street selected for the, the pilot plan was already identified for asphalt overlay improvements. They also had adequate space for bike paths and required minimal effort with very little cost. We've been out educating the public on the upcoming tax renewals that will be on the ballot April twenty-eighth. Information is on our website and our team will be sharing details of the renewals with civic and community groups throughout the city and other citizens. If you or an organization you know would like us to stop by and share, please give us a call and we would be glad to come out. Later on the agenda today, City Attorney William Bradford will speak to the new language for Proposition Six that we learned about just, what, last week?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, he will be doing that just to explain that particular tax and the fact that it is a renewal, even though the language will not say that. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events since we met, we last met. The citizen has supported several events and of course, I've named those already, all the Matinee Cruise, African-American History Parade, Black History Expo at Bill Cockrell Community Center, and the list goes on and on and on. But we want to thank all of you who participate and support and provide services to the citizens in our, our city. Those are the announcements. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Green, does anyone have any property standing there that you want to discuss with Mr. Green?
No, we don't have any, but I'll see somebody's-
No, Councilwoman Lynch.
Yeah.
No, my, I had a question to ask the mayor. I don't have any questions for property standing.
Okay.
On the tax renewals, is there a citizen group that's leading that effort, I guess, to educate the public on the renewals in addition to the city? You know, some, a lot of times there's, you know, some citizens group or something that's associated with these things. I was just-
Well, at the moment, we have approached one or two organizations.
Okay.
And we plan to try to put together just a list of all the organizations that will ask to help us in this effort. In fact, just today, I asked our CAO if, if they would pull together. He and Africa is, will be, will be sending out a list to different groups, civic groups, business groups, you know, all the different groups that we can name. And we will be asking them to support us and to assist us in educating our publics.
And certainly, may I include the council members as well when, when you see an opportunity for work for somebody promoted as well?
Yes, sir. I, I did send you all an email. I don't know if you got it. I sent an email probably two weeks ago at the last council meeting. I gave you booklets and said to you, we'll be sending you a list as soon as we get that together of the various places. In fact, we did send you a list probably a couple of weeks ago. We started, you know, going to different places already. And so, as, as you are able to set up meetings, we would ask that you would please let us know how we can help. Okay? So, when you set up places, if you let us know, we'll let you know. Sometimes things come up at the last minute and we're called and say, can you come by my group tomorrow? Or can you come by this afternoon? And we go. We will go anytime.
And, and-
Councilwoman Lynch still have to-
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, it shifted to another director. Go ahead. I apologize.
My last question. You've been getting pretty good. I didn't even have to say it at any time. Thank you. The printed materials, I know I saw some brochures. So, who, who was responsible for that, for printing that?
It was done in-house.
In-house? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, Councilwoman? Councilman Bradford, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and certainly apologize to the council lady. But I wanted to say this, Mayor, and I was in Jackson, Mississippi Friday, Saturday, and Sunday and I had an opportunity to observe the city. And it's, it's sort of, it was sort of disappointing to what I witnessed in Jackson. And the reason that Jackson is what it is, and I'm not going to get into a lot of detail, when, when citizens stop investing in their city, bad things happen.
Mm-hmm.
And we can't take anything for granted.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and I said at the last council meeting, and I'm, and I don't want to be overstating this, that there are forces already coming together for whatever reason to oppose this, this renewal. Now, I see it as cutting out no thought to smack our face.
Yes.
And, and we can't, Shreveport is, 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 is a different city than it was twenty years ago. And we got to realize that. And, 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 and it won't go back to the city that some people loved and benefited from. And, and, but at the same time, we have to live here. We, we love this city. We, we serve this city. So, we can't ever take, take for granted that things would happen. We have to work for them.
That's right.
But at the same time, we have to make this city friendly to everybody, all the citizens. Cutting, cutting services or eliminating certain, certain aspects of what makes our quality of life better is not, is not good.
Absolutely.
And, and that's what I saw in Jackson. I saw a reflection of what I just described. And when citizens don't support their city in, in ways that, that is, that is traditional in which we would afford ourselves to have certain, certain services. And those eliminations have to come because of our negligence and, and whatever other reason that we present ourselves to be against, against certain things, especially things that we have, we have been accustomed to, to providing for our services. Things start happening, including flight out of the city because of they don't feel like they, they're, they're getting the necessary responses for their tax dollars. So, so I'm, I'm one hundred percent for the, for the April twenty-eighth renewals and I hope that the city, the city, the citizens of this city would understand in regards of what may come before you, that we want to maintain a quality of, of services which will translate into a quality of life for our citizens.
Appreciate your comments, Ms. Councilman.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bradford. We should have got a collection report planned from Mr. Crawford.
Already sent in.
And we got one from Mr. Bradford also.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
We have three items. One is Resolution Nineteen to welcome Dr. Anita Archer and Dr. Claudia L. Thomas to the city of Shreveport. Ordinance fourteen will create and establish the intersection of Sandifer Drive and Norway Drive as a stop intersection. And Ordinance fifteen will create and establish a no-through truck route on Sandifer Drive between Fern Avenue and Stere Drive.
Mr. Chairman, we need to take these individual or collectively?
You can take them individually if you would like.
I move that-
I had a question on a couple of them.
You want to get them on the question or you want to get them now?
I'm going to take them up individually.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest that we hear whether or not there are any citizens who are for or against either one of these and then the motion to adopt or not, I mean, to add or not add?
Need to ask whether or not any citizen would like to speak in favor or against adding to the agenda.
Is there any member of the audience in favor of or against adding this legislation to the agenda? Anyone want to speak for or against adding legislation to the agenda? Seeing none.
Include eighteen.
Nineteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Nineteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Seeing none.
Well, my motion would be to do individual and I would move that we will add Resolution Nineteen to the agenda.
Second. It's been moved, motion by Councilman Bradford and second by the chair. Any discussions? Please vote. It's on nineteen only. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to add Ordinance fourteen to the agenda.
Second. It's been a motion by the vice chair and second by the chair. Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a question. I was looking for the fact sheet on this.
We didn't prepare one.
I'm sorry?
She said she was looking for a fact sheet. I said, we did not prepare one.
Okay. Let me ask about, is this as a result of a traffic study or is just a citizen? What's the background? I don't know.
There was a, so remember we're adding, proposing adding it to the agenda.
Right.
You can lay over if you want or we can do whatever. But it was a result initially of a citizen's request. A traffic study was done.
Okay.
The traffic study, to be frank with you, did not necessarily support the placement of a stop sign in this location. of a stop sign in this location.
Okay.
But this is for introduction today?
It is for introduction.
Yeah. I'd like to see a fact sheet, and I'd like to see, to get some information on the study that was done. Because we've had, we've had some areas that, you know, kind of the same thing has happened, where stop signs or whatever has been requested, and, and traffic studies done to say that, you know, they did not support it. And of course, I know it's ultimately up to the council to decide, but in this case, we just, just didn't have the information available. And so, so I'd like to see that.
You have a motion?
No, I'm just saying, I'd like to have some, the additional information.
Okay.
On the traffic study and the fact sheet.
Okay.
Okay.
We're ready to vote.
Any other discussion? That motion carries.
I'll make a motion on 15.
Second.
The motion by the vice chair, second by Councilman Bradford. Any discussion?
Okay, ditto on that one as well. Is it the same type situation here, or is it different?
Okay, now I'm going to say, from my experience here, I'm not sure if we've ever done a traffic study on neighborhoods that request no-through truck traffic.
Yeah.
But if I am mistaken on that...
I'm saying a fact sheet.
No, I think, I think, I mean, I'm sure a fact sheet's always good, but to echo what Councilman Jenkins was saying, I do think that if I'm, I could be wrong, but what I recall is that there are some specifications already in the ordinances that make this, this isn't changing who's supposed to be on that street, it's just notifying, because apparently there's a problem with it, or there's been some complaint about heavier trucks driving on the street that heavier trucks are not supposed to be on already. Whereas the stop sign one may actually change the traffic pattern, and that's why it necessitates traffic study. So I think there is a difference in the two, but I'm not saying that it's not helpful to have a fact sheet on either.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman, you request a...
Yeah, fact sheet.
A fact sheet. Okay. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Didn't y'all ready for airing?
This motion cares.
I don't know, not exactly sure how to go. I'm struggling with it a little bit, but I'm sure I'm going to figure that out before we're out of here today.
We're now down to public comments, and the vice chair will be the timekeeper.
I'll be the time, no. Tony will be the timekeeper, but I will announce the people that are scheduled to speak. Okay. Ken Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Ken Craft, 157 Archer, Shreveport, 71105. First, I want to thank Mason, and hope you vote in 2026. Talk to me about that. I'm 184 out of 184 elections. Secondly, I want to thank Police Chief Alan Crump for agreeing to be a guest speaker tonight at the Broadmore Neighborhood Association meeting at 6:00. We appreciate that very much. I'm going to repeat what I said three weeks ago about ordinance 6 and 7. Let's do it. It's actually an idea I had before I knew it was on the agenda, but street special revenue fund and collect a roadway asphalt program are important, but the voice of the people in 2011 on April 2nd takes precedence. By the same token, should Ackard bids come in high at some point, I fear they might, because Robert Westerman did the cost estimates on Knight Street and Ackard and many of the street paving projects in the 2011 bond issue in '08 and '09. And he estimated 2.5%, 3% inflation per year for concrete going up, pipe, engineering services. And if you look at the bids on Knight, God bless you, Robert, your numbers were right on. The amount overbid is about 2.8% per year above his estimate he did 10 years ago. But since he estimated Ackard in 2008, let's not be surprised when its bids come in high. So we may have to repeat this to do Ackard, and we may have to grab from S S R F or C R A P. Finally, on the new ordinance, on the Drew Brees ordinance, well, if Cedric's listening, the Tony Romo ordinance, number nine, even though it's two weeks away, A and E can be tricky. When I chaired it in '82, and we took bids on designing that big nasty five-way intersection at Kings Fairfield and St. Vincent by St. Mark's, the winning recommendation was three to two. Three of the committee members chose the winning firm, and two chose another firm. Somebody on the losing side complained because an engineer for the losing firm had a nephew who worked in the city hall mailroom at 1234 Texas. I didn't get the connection. So you can never win with A and E. You just can't. Somebody's going to fuss. A 20-year-old kid in the mailroom, his mom was the sister of one of the engineers on that project. That was 78 C 016. Forty-year ago project numbers, no problem. Now, Mason, I'll be happy to work with you. I want this group to allow me to come in on August 28th and give me, I won't speak for two months after it, I promise. I'll be silent in September and October. But if you give me nine minutes, if you give me nine minutes on August 28th, I'll do, I have a dream on the 55th anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to ask for that contract in writing before we go forward with that, but it'll be under consideration. Okay. Next, speaking on ITEP, Lady Carlson. And actually, the group speaking on ITEP, you will all be next in rows, so if you'll set yourself up on who wants to go next, that's fine. Since there are four or five of you that have put in, please state your name and address for the record. You are familiar, and limit your comments to three minutes, if you would.
I'll try. Good afternoon. My name is Lady Carlson. My address is 5732 Marina Bay Drive. And first, Interfaith does stand with the council and expressing condolences for the death of Larry Ramsey, and we've expressed that too. We also want to thank you, because we know you're public servants, but we also want to say this, that a vibrant democracy really demands informed and educated citizens, and we think we represent that, that we do due diligence to make sure that when we come before you, the information we give is correct. We, the leaders of Northern and Central Louisiana Interfaith, are here today to talk about the industrial tax exemption of the ITEP, specifically the exemption concerning Inferno, which we understand this body might be preparing to vote before in two weeks. Inferno's application indicates they have applied for the exemption for a machine purchase that has already been made, and we have packets to give to you before we go. The ITEP was created as an incentive for the purpose of encouraging manufacturers to locate an estate, creating new jobs, or manufacturers to expand their plants, thus creating new jobs. It's not intended as a reward or a giveaway for work that has already been completed. Greg Leroy is the executive director of something called Good Jobs First. Good Jobs First is a national think tank that has done lots of study, both on incentives and good jobs, good-paying, livable-wage jobs. Greg Leroy says that Louisiana is the only state that grants an exemption once work has been completed. Let me say that again. We are the only state that grants an exemption once work has been completed. I think we've always said we're not opposed to the exemptions, we're not opposed to tax exemptions, but we think that the ITEP should be used for the purpose the law was intended in 1936. I have 15 minutes left.
Thank you, Lady. Next, whoever wants to go next. I have four of y'all.
Hi, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, to the mayor, council members, and a happy Valentine to all the ladies, because tomorrow will be the 14th. My name is Bobby Edwards. I reside at 4650 Lake Shore Drive in Shreveport, Louisiana, 71109. Also a leader of the Interfaith Northern and Central Louisiana. Continuing the verbiage we have here on ITEP Industrial Tax Exempt Program, we at the Interfaith and our statewide organization, Together Louisiana, have fought for you to have local input into the ITEP process. Now, we were the ones who pointed out the governor, that's John Bill Edwards, that the Constitution gave him the power over and out-of-control ITEP process. Now, he in turn gave much of that power to you. We want to work with you to see that you use the power wisely. However, with several millage renewals coming up this April, we do not see the wisdom in giving away such a large portion of our tax dollars with no net job creation to show for it. Now, we want to lift up the actions of Sheriff Steve Prater. To our knowledge, he is the first public official in the state to deny an ITEP exemption under this new executive order, and hope that the order taxing bodies of the parish and the city will follow that suit. Now, we're the only state to grant exemptions after the fact. And we thank you. Have a nice day.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lois Scheib, 56, 36 South Lake Shore Drive, apartment 723, to be exact. I don't have much, but I better read it. Interfaith does not view Inferno, Calumet, or any other company which applies for ITEP exemptions as a villain. Rather, it would be poor business not to take advantage of the exemptions which have come to be available for reasons we can only guess at. But now that the misuse of exemptions has come to light, we see it as the responsibility of each government entity affected to take responsibility on behalf of the people who elected them to challenge and examine the requests to make sure they qualify.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having us here. My name is Susan Caldwell, and I serve as a religious educator at All Souls Unitarian Universalist Church here in Shreveport. We are a member congregation of Interfaith. We know you're familiar with the recent United Way study documenting the plight of people identified as Alice, asset limited, income constrained, employed, essentially the working poor of our community. The large number of people working in low-wage jobs, sometimes two and three jobs just to survive, would ultimately have a higher quality of life and be a greater asset to businesses seeking to locate here if they had access to job training opportunities that would make them part of a more highly skilled workforce, which is another asset for attracting business. Again, as Ms. Scheib has said, we are not anti-tax exemption, and we're certainly not anti-business. We have nothing against either Inferno or Calumet, or any other company that wants to provide jobs in this area. We understand that tax exemptions, when they're granted judiciously for their intended purpose, can be a terrific tool of economic development. What we're asking for is some accountability and transparency in the process, and that these incentives for true job creation be married to another model of economic development, one that lets our parish and city taxing bodies keep more of our tax dollars for the betterment of our schools, our roads and bridges, our law enforcement, our parks, and other local government services that create the kind of quality of life that will truly attract new business to our community. And as we stated earlier, we are the only state to grant exemptions after work has been completed. Thank you so much, and I have a packet.
And if you notice, we're all under three minutes. Yes.
That'll be special consideration, I can assure you. Just a little asterisk by it. James Carston here, is he planning to speak? Yes, you are, here. You didn't want to sit with them, I guess.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not with them. I, uh...
Independently interested.
Yeah. Thank you. James Carston's in 913 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104. Happy Mardi Gras. Thanks for having me. As I said, I'm not with Interfaith, but I'm glad they were here. They said a lot of the things that I think need to be said overall. There's one part that is starting to slip my mind, obviously getting up here. I think I really wanted to come, I was going to be better prepared in two weeks when we talk about this, but as for today, I really wanted to come in here to plant that seed that we need to, maybe if I could just ask y'all to potentially table this or stall it for a little while, while we can have time to attempt to set a, set a standard for all of these things. Since this is something new, I mean, even though the executive order is a year old, from what I've seen through the county parish school board, the county commission, I'm not speaking on behalf of y'all, but pretty much nobody has any idea of what's going on. I think that we have a major, major opportunity here to take that authority that's been granted from the state here, the local level, to actually have the control and to use it wisely. But in order to prevent, you know, corruption, any potential good old boy network type thing, in order to efficiently maximize the use of that authority would be to first set out a clear and concise standard, you know, like a minimum of jobs, you know, net positive jobs, actual jobs, set out, set out in stone. So not only to the business, they actually have the, they have the knowledge, they know what they're getting themselves into when they apply. Like right now, nobody knows what's going on. And if we had a clear, concise standard set out with clawbacks for those businesses that come in and say that, hey, we're going to do this, and we're going to create X amount of jobs, and five years later, they're at a negative amount, you know, they've got three less employees than they had five years ago when we gave them $80,000 in, you know, tax exemptions. That's the kind of thing that we can't allow to happen, at least not again. I mean, status quo has not been working for this city in my lifetime. We have an opportunity to make changes now, and I hope that at least that seed's planted in each of your heads to think on it over these next two weeks and potentially stall these guys out. This is, what, almost a two-year-old application as it is anyways. Another couple of weeks or months while we, as a city, set, set up and discuss, or at least plan and try to set up a set of standards to base this on, to go forward with all the ITEP applications, because I mean, you're probably going to be getting a lot now. And I'm almost out of time. Thanks again. Happy Mardi Gras, and I'll see you guys in two weeks.
And just to let you know, we did talk about that yesterday during the work session about setting up some, as you say, standards or criteria, if you will. I have a feeling on this one that we're kind of up against a deadline on date. At least it was presented to us yesterday that we have to resolve this by...
March 2nd.
March 2nd. So we don't have this right now. We're going to look into a lot of different things, so it's not falling on deaf ears, but we may be kind of stuck.
I'll let the most of you know how to reach me, and I actually am doing quite a bit of work and research in this particular thing. If I could ever grab anybody's ear over lunch or anything like that, I'd be more than welcome to, you know, contribute my time and efforts to assist any way I can.
And I think you'd be encouraged by the conversation that we had yesterday. Some of the points that you just brought up were points that we did discuss. So I mean, it certainly is something that we're thinking about, and in roughly the similar terms as it sounds like you're talking about it. And if it is, you know, some relief to know, in this contract that's before us now, there are clawback provisions in there that are, you know, whether or not we need to further refine them or talk about how to enforce them or impose them, those are always good continued conversations. But there is something in there, you know, so do want to give, you know, that acknowledgement of the work that the city legal office did. But certainly, you're right to say this is a program that hasn't been a local decision in the past, so it isn't one that many of us are as familiar with. I think we've all been kind of talking about it, looking into it, trying to educate ourselves. But it is a process that we'll see more in the future, and it will definitely benefit all of us to have some standards and some criteria that we can use to review these things, because we don't even yet know to what volume they'll be coming to us. I mean, we could be seeing one of these every week. We don't know. So thank you for thinking of that and bringing that to our attention, and let's continue talking about it, because there is certainly the start of a good conversation there.
Right. Thanks a lot, guys. Happy Mardi Gras.
Councilwoman Lynch?
Yeah, I want to make sure that before they leave, because our next meeting is like the 27th or something like that?
Right.
So I'm assuming since we're up against a March 2nd deadline, that we'll be... So, I'm assuming since we're up against a March 2nd deadline, that we'll be making a decision at that meeting?
That's the way I read it.
Correct? Okay. So, are we trying to have something in place by then, or we're saying that we may just have to go on and make a decision on this one and continue to formulate something, you know, for future applications? I'm just, I just, I want them to leave here knowing kind of which direction we're going at this point.
Sure. I think, I'm not sure if y'all could answer yet, is that something that we need to adopt as a part of ordinance, or is that something that we can sort of just as a council?
I think the mayor talked about it yesterday, Councilman, and that is the fact that when these applications are brought forward from the committee, when they come through the parish with the four governing taxing authorities, that it would go to a committee of choice. She mentioned the infrastructure committee, which seems reasonable, because most of these deal with infrastructure, some relevancy therein. And you could even call for an infrastructure committee meeting between now and the next council meeting to review this, to have Inferno representatives there, as well as public comments to review this application as well. But then going forward, as we receive the application, we would forward it automatically to the committee of your choice, as the mayor had mentioned, and then you can do with it what you will.
Yeah, and I think that's what, that's what I was, and we discussed going to the committee, which I think is a great idea. It's this first one and the, the first one in the timeframe on this first one here is what I'm still not...
Absolutely.
...totally clear about. But we could talk about it afterwards and see, but I'm not entirely sure if there's a deadline on this, that this has to have a decision.
This was turned, and once the application's turned into the taxing authorities, there's 120 days. This was turned in November 2nd, and because it was the first one, there was a lot of conversation going back and forth between the taxing authorities about how to bring it forward, and so it's a learning process, as you mentioned, as the mayor mentioned earlier. But I think, I think that's a good proposition going forward, both from the administration, as the mayor mentioned, and the council, to do and make sure that it's thoroughly vetted.
Okay. So, are we having an infrastructure meeting between now and the 27th to...
I mean, I don't, as Chair of Infrastructure Committee is why I'm answering this, but I don't mean to keep jumping in, but I'm Chair of Infrastructure. I don't mind doing it. You know, I do think infrastructure kind of has a full load, and I'm happy to do it this time, and, you know, if there's another committee, or if we think that there is merit to, because I think there might be merit to just establishing an economic development committee. I mean, we don't have one that...
Committees we could get rid of that haven't been...
Yeah, there's some that we really aren't meeting regularly that we could...
We might consider Audit and Finance as well, because it does impact finance.
That's true. Yeah. So, like I say, I'm more than happy to call a meeting that would focus on this through Infrastructure Committee, if that's the way the council chooses to handle this one. But I think there might be a valid reason to kind of have a committee that's really looking more at economic development issues, that's more focused not just on this, but other things too, that deserves its own attention, that could be worth a discussion later.
Okay. So, you think that we're going, I just want them to leave with some, you know, idea of where we're going. Okay, so we're likely to have a committee meeting?
I will call one. If that is what the, if I'm seeing nods, then I will call one, and we will do that.
Between now and the 27th. Okay? All right. Thank you.
That's it, Councilwoman Lynch. Councilman Bradford.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I certainly support the recommendation from the mayor and the CEO and Chairman of the committee, assists on the committee. I mean, it's unfortunate that we are put into this position that we got to, we got to make a decision without totally vetting it to the extreme that we need to, but at the same time, we do what we do. But I suggest that we have a committee, Mr. Chairman, as you proposed, invite those interested parties to be a part, bring their, I mean, this is very important. I hadn't seen this, and I need to, I need to check it for accuracy. And then the gentleman who spoke regarding, he's doing some research, if he could email us whatever he discovers, that'd give us, again, some information prior to the meeting that we will have in the infrastructure. So, you know, we want to be certain when we vote on this issue in the next meeting that we would be confident that what we did is the right thing, because it may be hard to reverse it once we start. But like I say, once we do something, then precedents take place, and we want to make sure that we set the process in a way in which no one would feel that they've been treated different, indifferent. So, I support the meeting, and hopefully we can get more information so we'll be better enlightened on what we're, you know, what different directions that people feel that we should go on this item. And I really appreciate the input from the citizens on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bradford. Councilman Corvus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I agree with Councilman Bradford. I think that, long-term, that we may need to form a new committee, Economic Development Committee, or come up with a name for that. You know, after we get through this first one, if we want to bring it to Audit and Finance, that's fine. Audit and Finance can take them up. I don't think this is something that we're going to necessarily get all of our ducks in a row on in two weeks. There's no way. I do feel okay about this particular piece on our agenda, because it's pretty small. I mean, we're talking $12,000 over a five-year period. And there is that look back, if they don't, if they don't meet what they say they're going to do with jobs, then they lose that exemption. So, I think it's safe. If we're not ready, we don't have what we want to do moving forward, but we're ready to move on this. It's not a huge number, and I look forward to however we choose to do this, Audit and Finance, or a new committee, and, because I do anticipate that whether it's this council or the next council, we're going to see a lot of these.
Administration, Mayor.
I do, I have a question for our city attorney. Is there something in the law that prohibits the 120-day window from being extended so that the council can have time to vet more and to look at criteria, put in place the standards? I think on yesterday, we said, you know, the administration doesn't have any stand on this. Our responsibility is to bring it to you, the body. You get, you know, the opportunity to vote on it, but I'd like to check to see if there is an opportunity to have more time for you to have that chance to vet and to see if you want to establish some criteria and standards before voting on this particular ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. I know the law speaks in affirmative that there should be a response within 120 days. I would like a chance to research the question of whether or not that period can be extended, and I'll have a response to the council by tomorrow, as it relates to if there's a mechanism to extend that 120-day period, or if it's dispositive in the language of the law, that it has to be done within 120 days.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. That's it, Councilman Corvus?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Next, John Settle, please, who would like to speak on ITAP.
I think I'll pass. I'm doing some research and will write about it. I do think, if you would come to the mic, assume we can record you for a minute.
I know you've never been in here before, nor have you ever spoken in...
John Settle for Tealwood. I'm trying to do a lot of research on this, because I know Baton Rouge is trying to develop a matrix. I do have two concerns. One is, whatever your decision will be, it's, I hate to say precedent, but it does set that. And I was discussing with the Interfaith Committee, what happens if you don't act within 120 days? And it's my understanding that there'll be some average formula, but that if you don't act, then it may be a lesser amount. But I need to learn that, and that's something that I think everybody needs to know. If y'all don't act within 120 days, I think that the average by the other four bodies...
That's correct.
...is considered, and that's, you know, that's kind of a punt, but sometimes a punt may be better with lesser dollars and the full thing. But I'm going to, I know that Mr. Bradford has plenty of staff, and since they're not pushing so hard, since they slowed down the cell tower, maybe we can get this, since this is right on, but I'll also try to send some, publish on this or send some information to y'all.
I appreciate...
And I appreciate a copy of what you sent to them on this as well.
That's going to be a privilege communication, John. You do that.
I'm used to that. All right. I'll get it from one of them then. Thank you.
By the way, thank you for the email last night on the Baton Rouge stuff. Thanks. Okay. Changing streams here, Mr. Wiener. He is speaking on the A and E Committee, I believe, and the appointments.
I'm Bill Wiener, number two, Longleaf Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I entered three cards for three different items on here, and I want to speak to them separately. I think this is, is this on item nine, amendment?
This is on item nine and item 13. Yes, sir. I'm going to save your other comment until after the meeting.
I don't know what 13 is, but item nine. I would just like to get some information on what this is all about. I'm a retired architect, and I did some city work, and I had to resign for it because the city was asking me to violate state law, bid laws, and I wouldn't do it. And they were, the city also put out change orders without me being involved as the architect, and asked me to sign them, and I said I wouldn't do it. I wasn't part of that. And I've seen things happen, and I was served on the State Architect Selection Board twice, once under Edwards, and once under the legislature. And I just want to see what this is all about, to see if it's moving forward to make things better. So, if you can get me the information and don't act on it this time, I'll come back next time. What's the other item?
The other item is the appointments to the committees. Proposed appointments.
Can I get my three minutes starting over? They're different issues.
We can give you a motion to extend, so let's just keep trucking.
Okay. Let me just say, for instance, if each of you were in Dallas, and you had to go to the emergency room, and you found out that you had a tumor on something inside, and they said you needed to get it operated on right away, and you decided to come back to Shreveport to find out who would be the best surgeon. You wouldn't go to your councilman, you wouldn't go to your banker, you wouldn't go to the best attorney in town. A rational person would talk to their internist, maybe somebody at the medical school, and to find out who to go to. The Architect Selection Committee is, you're appointing two people who have no idea about architecture and construction. They're great people, but they should serve on a different committee, and the appointments to that committee should be people who are conversant with construction and design. And I'm going to ask you to either delete them or postpone them and get qualified people, because there's a mess and there's an opportunity to straighten things out. It doesn't mean they're bad. It does, it's just like handing me a baton and say, go conduct symphony. I can do my best, but I'm not qualified. Thank you.
That's where we are, sir. Back to you, Mr. Chair. Well, we would be right after public comments.
Well, while he's finding his place, let me say, I want to thank, give you a little extra time. I want to thank the people that are, that came out, Interfaith and Mr. Carstensen and others, who have written us or emailed us about the ITAP changes. It's not a, certainly not a sexy topic, and it's certainly not one that we would normally see a lot of citizen engagement on, but I think it's necessary. And I'm glad that you all are looking at this, and it's something that has gotten the attention of the public, because we all need to be concerned about the economics of this city, and because a lot of other issues emanate simply because of the lack of money and the lack of opportunities that people have. And so, it is very important, even though this initial application is a small one, but it's an exemption, and I'm glad that they're pushing it down to local government, because we're, you know, a lot of times decisions are made at the state level, at the federal level, and we have no say-so whatsoever. You know, we just kind of have to rubber stamp it. But this gives us an opportunity to have a direct say-so in something that impacts the economics of this city. So, thank you all for engaging the council and the other governing bodies on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lynch. I found my place now. Mr. Thompson, there are no items on the consent agenda. Please continue.
Mr. Chairman, we have, we have...
Confirmation, is that a point?
We have some. We have some items on the consent agenda for adoption, some resolutions for adoption. There are resolutions nine, 10, 11, and 12. A motion to adopt the consent agenda would be in order.
Been moved by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Corvus. End discussion. Please vote.
I really wanted to have a couple of these pulled from consent.
Or you can make that motion.
Nine and 10.
A substitute motion.
Yeah, I'd like to remove resolution nine and 10 from the consent agenda.
As a substitute motion to remove nine and 10, I second as substitute motion.
I think, I don't think you can, I think I could just ask for it to be pulled.
Well, the motions have been made for the adoption of the consent agenda.
We're tracking.
Okay.
See, we got...
But there's a motion on, there's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion for the items 11 and 12 at this point.
Right.
And we, they have a second.
Right. I suppose.
To remove those, to remove, no, we're going to vote on 11 and 12.
We are voting on 11 and 12.
Was that a...
It's a motion to approve item 11 as well on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Not going to confuse it.
That motion carries, and we have a... Did you want to just go pull it, or she's going?
Take it up.
The motion, yeah, the motion to adopt 11 and 12 has been...
That motion carries.
Approved.
Mr. Chairman, we are now under the regular agenda legislation, resolutions on second reading and final passage. The first is resolution number nine. It authorizes 10-10353 Goldsberry Road to make a connection to the City of Shreveport's water and sewer system.
Certainly. Check it.
Been moved by Councilman Corvus, seconded by Councilman Emerson.
Oh, it's Flurry.
Flurry, I'm sorry, Councilman Flurry. Any discussion on that? Please vote.
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't have a quick point of discussion. On some of these fact sheets, you know, for the ones where we were, certainly under the ones where we were adding roads, engineering was providing kind of a long-term maintenance kind of thing. Can we get something similar like that on tying into infrastructure? I mean, I don't know, what I'm essentially wanting is...
We usually provide you, Mr. Councilman, with an, if we have an annexation, we provide you with a list of additional charges the city services will charge. In this event, there's a water line that's already there, so we don't anticipate any addition.
So, it's just a tie-in to a water line?
It's just a tie-in. We don't anticipate any maintenance, other than what we would normally perform on that line anyway.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay.
Any other discussions? Please vote. And that motion carries.
I believe it's 54.
Five to...
Six point one. Six point one. The next is resolution ten. It authorizes twenty-one forty-seven Southern Loop to make a connection to the City of Freeport's water and sewer system.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Corbin and seconded by Councilman Flurry. End discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to be clear. Administration is, what, what is being proposed on these two is any different than what we've done in the past?
No. These two pieces of property lie outside of the city, so it's required that the administration bring it to the council for their approval. They pay, as long as they remain outside the city and are not annexed in the future, they pay double water and sewer rates, and they have access to those lines. In this case, ordinance number nine has an eight-inch main that runs right in front of the property, that's city main. And then there's a twenty-four-inch main that runs off of Southern Loop for the Southern Loop Storage Facility.
So then ask for anything special, Russell. Thank you, Mr. Thank you.
Well, like on, on resolution ten, aren't they also applying to be annexed?
I think they're applying for potential annexation.
But that's a separate consideration, correct?
That's a separate consideration, and we would have to bring that in, in an additional ordinance.
Just so we're clear, to apply, you have to agree to be annexed if we choose. That's why that piece of paper is in.
And that's, and that's what that's referring to.
That's part of the application.
That's...
That if we choose at a later date, I mean, I don't know if they've even considered it, but all the ones we've done over the eight years, they fill out, that paper work if we choose to annex them at a future date.
And that would, that would require additional legislation the administration would bring back to the council for annexation.
But most of the time, we have followed through with annexation.
I would say the majority, we have not.
Well, it, well, it, no, I mean, I think, it depends on if we wanted it. I mean, if they, there are some people who have requested to be annexed, and we have considered it. But there are a lot that we have done, particular water connections, that we didn't end up in.
Residential, not so much, commercial, if it's a taxable benefit to the city, over and above what we would supply in city services, that's certainly something that the administration considers and would bring it to the council's attention.
And it would logically, the Southern Loop corridor is surrounded by, by city on both sides of the street.
Correct.
And as this commercial corridor develops, it's logical to think that that would be annexed.
And I'm not even, I'll be honest with you, I don't believe we've ever annexed involuntarily any residential since we've been, even with all of the, remember when we had the shortage of water in southeast Freeport, and we had a lot of people petitioning? And the parish came in and put the infrastructure for a lot of water mains out there, and some kind of caution. I'm not aware that we have annexed any of those.
The only annexation that I can recall is existing subdivisions that are in the city that are expanding their footprint, and property that was in the parish, and then that was annexed, because it was R in existing subdivision, they're expanding. Not, not an individual home, to my knowledge.
Any further discussion? Please vote. And that motion carries six one.
Resolution number seven extends the expiration date prescribed in section sixteen point three G of the Unified Development Code for the approval of the special use permit in zoning case number C dash one oh two seventeen. For the property located at three twenty-seven Kings Highway.
Moved by Councilman Bradford, seconded by the chair. Any discussion?
Yes. I'm not exactly what I felt understand still, it's just cases, we still have a hundred and eighty, I don't know how many days. We have a significant portion of time still on this, he has a hundred and eighty days to perform it, if I'm not mistaken, or is it a...
A hundred and eighty.
Okay. And I'm concerned that, two things. Number one, that we're setting a precedent that we should be doing this every time somebody has some type of litigation or appeals it at District Court. And I'm frankly a little surprised that our ordinance itself doesn't provide for that automatic extension if there is a fight. So that's concern number one. Concern number two is, the absence of this certainly not gonna encourage the court system to proceed with this in any expedience. And I really don't want this deal hanging out for three or four years in this kind of nebulous of, well, it's been extended, and so he's not compelled to push it forward, or either party. And the poor property owner then cannot do anything about, with the property. And the neighborhood has, you know, no recourse, or is certainly not encouraged. And then the actual business center is trying to start businesses, kind of stuck in the middle. So I don't, I don't really think this helps us at this point. And I don't think it does any of, even if the business owner thinks it's the best idea for him. I just can't imagine it's gonna work out anybody's favor. So that's why I'm asking that people vote against this.
Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, how are you at the council, Lady Lynch?
No, I just had, did you have a response, a city attorney, to his first concern? And then my other question is, are we under some type of time constraint in terms of needing to vote on this today, or, or does it, does that impact it at all?
I guess the first concern being, is it a suspensive appeal, or...
No, he was saying about whether we were setting some type of precedent.
Well, I mean, the, the law provides that this is an option in order to allow a applicant to maintain their special use permit or the potential for it without having accomplished the stipulations or the work related to it that were approved in the previous, by the, by the council previously. As to how it impacts, I don't necessarily see that it sets a precedent. Of course, that's a policy decision that you all have to make a decision on. But to the extent that what time constraints we are, are we under, the permit provides for a hundred and eighty days for essentially the applicant to make the, to fulfill the stipulations required under the MPC's recommendations and the council approval. If he gets to that period and has not accomplished that, then he risks the loss of that special use. And this is, I believe, an effort by the councilman to, Councilman Bowman, to provide him with ample time in light of the fact that he is currently in pending litigation related to the appeal by the neighborhood on these stipulations, or, excuse me, on the special use permit.
Okay, when does the original hundred and eighty days expire?
The, the applicant has until May twenty-seventh of two thousand and eighteen. And that's dating it from the appeal date with the city council, which was November twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen.
And this is extending to what date?
May... If you extend it another hundred and fifty-seven days, it would take it to November of two thousand and eighteen, roughly.
So the extension is for how many days, Councilwoman?
Well...
Another hundred and eighty days?
It's a hundred and fifty-seven, that's what it says. I don't know where the hundred and fifty-seven came from, so...
It's a hundred and fifty-seven days from the date that the courts decide the issue.
Oh, from the days at the court, okay.
That's true. That would be making the assumption the courts have made their decision.
The fifty-seven days come from the hundred and eighty days minus the days that elapsed before the suit was filed. It's the difference between the days when the suit was filed and the, the end of the period.
So is the property just gonna be enconvered until then, I guess?
I, I don't know. It's really...
Because we don't know, it's a private contract between the two people, and we don't have any visibility to it. But that's my, you're hitting on exactly my concern.
I mean, the landowner could decide that he doesn't want to wait on all of that, and he could say, "I'm doing something else."
The applicant could proceed with opening the project up, but the problem is, he's taking the risk that if the courts rule against him in the courts, in other words, then he could lose the money he has spent on improving the property. That's the risk he's taking.
Yeah.
Otherwise, right now, if you just let it play itself out to the twenty-seventh of May, and he's not done anything, then it expires.
And then, he could reapply, though, you would have to start the process over again.
Yes, ma'am, he would.
Do you have to wait a year, or could, is it...
No, because it wasn't a denial, so he could come back in and make an application to the MPC.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The problem, the problem in this whole scenario is that what is occurring here is not the fault of the applicant. The applicant, in good faith, made an application, had a lease agreement with the landowner. The landowner agreed to lease the property. MPC accepted the application, approved the application with stipulations. The applicant is willing to abide by the stipulations. He's, 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 the time is ticking for the applicant. What this, what this would do is, would stop the clock and give him the opportunity to wait and see what the court's gonna render. And the court has several options that they can render. You know, it was the opinion of this councilman that, that this body didn't actually make enough, make a, make a decision. It was a three-three, it was a three-three vote, which the city attorney ruled that because of the three-three vote, then the, then the, then the order of the MPC prevails. The applicant could have appealed it as well to not go along with the stipulations. But he has agreed to abide by the stipulations and move to, to, to that order. But he's afraid that if he does that, and the courts do something that is not in his favor, then he would, he would lose both time, time and money in regards to moving forward this project. And if the time doesn't stop, and in the interim, the owner may want to pull out of the lease agreement and do something else. But I think, you know, the court is gonna give us a ruling, and hopefully it will be something that we can deal with within a reasonable time, but at the same time, I think it's unfair for us not to be considerate of this applicant and not stop the clock and allow the courts to, to, to address this and give us some directions on which we would be giving, giving this, this applicant all the consideration that this body can give him, and not, and not leave him hanging, wondering if it's, if the, if the hundred and eighty days expire. He haven't done anything, he doesn't meet the criteria of the, of the, of the application, and it'll be a lost loss for everybody. So I think it'd be in our good interest, in the interest of the way we do business, that we will allow this resolution to pass and give the applicant every opportunity to establish his business as he's asked for strived.
And really, what I was hoping, that we just wait till May, table this till May, see where we are in the court system, and then bring it up in May, because then we might have some idea of where the court is on this. That was my original proposal, but I feel better with the twenty, December twenty eighteen.
I'm gonna make a substitute motion to extend one year from the date of application, which would be, get me out of...
December twenty-first, twenty eighteen.
That would be a day from the appeal. The application, I'm assuming, was in October.
Her motion needs to be in, in a light.
It used to be the application at the MPC level. I would say the probably clearer date would be the November twenty-eighth.
Eleven twenty-eight. Twenty nineteen, right?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Are you gonna concur with, with Speaker Paul? This is your, this is your ordinance.
I, I'm sorry, we are having trouble down here understanding exactly what's going on.
A sidewalk.
Yeah, we're kind of caucusing and trying to do a motion the same way. I'm making a substitute motion to, to extend the expiration date until eleven twenty-eight, twenty eighteen.
That's going to be an amendment to the resolution?
Yes.
Which will require it to be in writing? If we can pass this temporarily, we can prepare the amendment in writing?
Okay.
And then bring this up for deliberation shortly.
Okay.
So?
So moved to postpone the vote on this temporarily.
Second in motion.
They're moved by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Bradford. Any other discussion on this? Saying, please vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Resolution number thirteen authorizes the mayor to dedicate Edward Street at Crockett Street in honor of the late Lou Garrett Burnett.
So moved?
Second.
And if I may ask, is there anybody here for the purpose of supporting Lou in this particular nomination, or, let me say, dedication? I don't believe there is. So, but if there was, somebody, I'd ask them to come forward, but I don't believe there is. Okay.
Any other discussion? Please vote. That motion passes.
And I, I would ask that the clerk read the actual dedication, if you would, for the, for the record, and then allow some moment for any council members that would like to say any comments about it afterwards.
We can read it, but it's actually gonna be printed in the record.
I know, but I'd like, I'd like to get it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to dedicate Edward Street at Crockett Street in honor of the late Lou Garrett Burnett, and to otherwise provide with respect there too by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Whereas Lou Garrett Burnett, a contributor to the forum since nineteen ninety-nine, and publisher of the Faxnet Update since two thousand nine, January the nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Whereas Lou Burnett, a native of Holm, Louisiana, graduated with a bachelor's degree in journalism in nineteen sixty-three and a master's degree in journalism in nineteen sixty-five from LSU, where he served as sports editor, managing editor for two terms, and editor of the Daily Reverie. And whereas Lou Burnett served as press secretary for U.S. Representative F. Edward Abear of New Orleans until his retirement in nineteen seventy-seven. Burnett then became chief of staff for United States Representative Jerry Huckabee for sixteen years. And whereas Lou Burnett retired from the federal government on January the third, nineteen ninety-three, after twenty-seven years and for his service on Capitol Hill, Burnett was named to personalities of the South and whose who in American politics. And whereas Lou Burnett then moved to Freeport and wrote a column for the Bossier Press Tribune and thirteen other newspapers in North Louisiana. And whereas Lou Burnett served as executive assistant to Freeport Mayor Robert Bull Williams from nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight, and in nineteen ninety-nine, he became the senior political columnist for the Forum News and was known as the political voice of Freeport. And whereas Lou Burnett served as a political analyst for K T A L TV, K S L A TV, K T B S TV, and did special broadcasts for Comcast Cable Political Shows. He served on the Political Hall of Fame Committee, as well as the Louisiana Political Hall of Fame Foundation Board, which selects inductees for the Hall of Fame Museum in Winfield, Louisiana. And whereas Lou Burnett's newsletter called Faxnet Update had an influential readership of more than three thousand each week in seventeen Louisiana cities and fifteen states. And whereas forum publisher Jay Covington said, "It cannot be overstated how important Lou's voice was to this community and to our forum readers. His honest reporting was appreciated and deeply respected. The passion that Lou had for what he did was heartfelt, and readers could sense that. His friends and colleagues knew it. I fear we will not see another like him." Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Freeport in due legal and regular session convened, that the mayor, on behalf of the city, is authorized to dedicate Edward Street at Crockett Street in honor of Lou Garrett Burnett. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be signed by each member of the city council and executed in duplicate originals, with one original presented to Lou Garrett Burnett's family and the other filed in perpetuity in the office of the clerk of council for the City of Freeport. And I believe that it has been signed by each councilor.
Yes, if. If not now, would, at the end, if, I'm just asking if Mr. Sutter would like to get up and speak or say a word on, on this? Then I'm just extending that opportunity.
I'd just like to say, he, he, in my opinion, tried to, though we were not of the same political party, he really tried to present everything very fairly and reasonably and really had a lot of outreach out of both sides of the aisle. You know, I think he, you know, certainly from my perspective, he was, you know, very accessible and was always eager to seek out information from me in an absolutely fair and reasoned manner. I never found any of his comments, whether he and I saw things the same way or not, I always felt that they were very honestly represented, and I appreciate that. I also think the great thing about Lou was that you could always call him and bounce ideas off of him and find, you know, kind of where he thought the middle ground was on a lot of different issues. And I used that a lot, and I appreciated his friendship. And, you know, sorry to seem, let's just say it like that, but certainly a great asset of the city. I'm sure it won't be long before he is enshrined in Winfield as well. So, that's my comment.
Any other councilman?
Yeah, I, I would like to echo Councilman's sentiments in the sense that Lou was indeed a friend of the city. I didn't think he played the political game of Republican, Democrat, left and right, black and white. I think Lou was the most moderate of, of individuals, the kind of citizens Shreveport need more of. His, his Fax Net was wildly distributed and I enjoyed reading it every week because he would, you know, he would, like, he would be fair and, and, and objective in what he, in what he printed. I don't really remember anything controversial because he was always, he was always on point and, and very articulate in how he expressed his views and the views of those that, that engaged him. I know Ms. Sutter's gonna come up in a minute, but I'm gonna ask him, is there any opportunity he can continue that wonderful Fax Net piece? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Bradford, Councilwoman Lynch?
Yes, I too want to just say Lou was a, was a very special person. He, and I would say Angelo Repolo and another good friend of mine, whose service I went to Saturday, Fletcher Thorn Thompson, were three gentlemen who were not intimidated by me having an opinion on any range of subjects. I've not found too many folks in this city with that capability. And, but those three gentlemen certainly respected the opinions of others, whether they agreed with it or not, because they had their own opinions too. But it was never, you know, in any type of adversarial way or to try to convince you of something. It was just always, you know, respect for your opinion and what you had to say. Certainly, you know, gonna miss Lou. I don't know how he and John got to be friends. I, I hadn't figured that out yet. And as he was saying, you know, their last time together, I'm thinking, you know, I, I, I'm sure it was a blessing. I'm glad that you were there for him, John, but I have these visions of spending my last moments with you, and then, I don't know, is this that work for me? But I'm glad that, you know, as a friend, that you were, you were able to, to, to be there for him. You know, having, you know, had to do that with friends and family, that's, you know, that's very commendable and very special, to be able to, to do that with a person. And so thank you, Councilwoman Jenkins, for this recognition. I wish, you know, for guys that are larger than life like Lou, that we could do something, you know, more elaborate and perhaps more, you know, fitting. But I think the most important thing is, is the experience that we had and hopefully his character and his integrity we can emulate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lynch. Councilman Everson?
Just briefly, you know, when I first returned to Shreveport and I worked it for quite some time for Senator Landry and, you know, covered North Louisiana along with Tari Bradford out there, who I'm happy to still be able to work with in a different capacity today. But, but Tari brought me on there, working for Senator Landry, and, you know, it was really neat to see Lou's grasp of what was going on at the federal level and the interaction that we had with him there. Certainly, the federal elected officials knew that he knew what he was talking about and really liked to reach out to him to communicate to, to local groups of people. And, you know, so it was kind of, it was kind of really neat to see somebody who worked at that large level, that kind of high-up picture, as well as the local level, how just well-versed he was in different types of politics in a day and age where there's so much specialization and people just get super knowledgeable about one small area. He really knew many layers of government and politics. And as has been mentioned before, his ability to be, to report things and inform people without necessarily pushing an agenda or his opinion is a nuance that we should admire. And it is a nuance that is lost on, in sort of the social media age, you know, where we are kind of so inclined to just put our opinion out there and either you like it if you, if you agree with me or you don't post anything, and I don't hear it from anyone who doesn't agree with me. You know, that's sort of an age that we're in now, and it's really neat to be able to remember and reflect on a guy like Lou, who really put both sides out there and was able to make sometimes complicated details of government a little more relatable to somebody who didn't have hours to read something. They just had a few minutes and they wanted to understand, and Lou was, did a great job of boiling it down to what a regular person needed to understand. And we'll, we'll certainly appreciate that. He certainly left a good mark on this community and, and we're proud to have had it.
Thank you, Councilman Everson. Councilman Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Lou was certainly one of a kind. He was very helpful to me when I decided to run for City Council. Having never been really involved in politics at all. He was a, he was a good resource, along with a handful of other folks. Lou loved politics. I think that's, that's just it. He loved all things politics. He was easy to disagree with, and, and I think Jeff said a big statement is, Lou had a way of being fair and, and nice and still getting his point across and being able to separate personal feelings sometimes from what the story was. And, you know, anybody that can keep a publication called Fax News going in the social media age, I, hands off to Lou. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Corbin. Mr. Sutter?
John Sutter, again. I, I think y'all had a lot of good comments. I can't add much to them. I do know that when I went over to Lou's house, and I thought it was just to share a rum and coke with a little bit of cherry juice, and he kind of surprised me with some bad news. He did talk a lot about Stephanie, and I knew then that's when her ears were burning. Because we did discuss in great detail this, this election year. And we talked about a transition from Lou to John, but it was not gonna be until after the election. And we talked a lot about it. But I, I appreciate the comments y'all made, and he certainly set a high mark for people who want to inform the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that latitude.
Mr. Thompson?
Resolution 14, amending resolution 200 of 2017. This is a resolution that was previously adopted by the council. This is a technical amendment that corrects the designation from LLC Limited Liability Corporation to Inc. Incorporated. That's the only thing it does.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by the Vice Chair. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries seven, zero.
Resolution 15, amends resolution number 189 of 2017.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by the Vice Chair. Mr. Bradford?
Yes, sir. This is a technical amendment related to, or technical change to the language contained in Proposition 6. On April 28th, taxpayers will be asked to continue the levy and collection of certain special ad valorem taxes. In our initial conversations with the legislative auditor, it was approved that the, and agreed that the Proposition 6, which is a three-platoon tax millage, would be placed on the ballot for voter approval. The three-platoon millage allows for a three-police shift system that we have here in the City of Shreveport. The citizens have paid for this three-platoon millage for the last 81 years. However, upon review by the legislative auditor, it was determined, and of course, through a court proceeding down in Baton Rouge, that this matter actually needed to be placed on the ballot. Originally, we were using the language from Lake Charles's election, which allowed for the continuation and maintenance of the police three-platoon system. However, last week, we were contacted by the Attorney General's Office, and they are requesting that we designate this as a new tax. Although the citizens have paid this for the last 81 years, because this is the first time that they have voted on this, the Attorney General is requesting that this be placed as a new tax. The State Bond Commission has also signed on to this, and we will be on their March 2nd special, special ad hoc meeting for the approval of this proposition, as well as the other five propositions that will be on the ballot. But we wanted to make it abundantly clear to the public that they have paid this in the past pursuant to certain statutory and constitutional allotments. But this will be designated as a new tax on the ballot, although they have paid this in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Anyone else? Please vote. Motion carries seven, zero.
Resolution 16, thanks Alexa Talamo for her service to the citizens of Shreveport as an investigative reporter for the Shreveport Times from September 2015 to February 2018.
Second.
I'm moved to pull this from the agenda because we're not gonna let her go. Lex, come up, please. I'm sorry. Girl, I am just, oh my goodness. I'm gonna cry.
Don't make me cry.
Point of, point of order, Mr. Chairman. Before we get comments from Lex, I would, I would like for the clerk to read the resolution and we would vote on it and then, and then have comments from the recipients. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clerk?
Okay. You say to read it first? I'm having difficulty.
Yes, sir.
This is a resolution to thank Alexa Talamo for her service to the citizens of Shreveport as an investigative reporter for the Shreveport Times from September 2015 to February 2018 and to otherwise provide with respect there too by Councilman James Flurry. Whereas Alexa Talamo was employed by the Shreveport Times in September 2015 as a reporter. And whereas Alexa Talamo covers long-form and series investigations for the government city beat and breaking news for the Shreveport Times coverage area. And whereas Alexa received her bachelor's degree in secondary education in English from Penn State University and is pursuing a graduate degree in investigative journalism with a focus on crimes against children from Arizona State University. And whereas before moving to Shreveport, Alexa was one of 11 reporters selected nationwide to conduct a three-month investigation of sex traffit, traffic, traffic team in Louisiana. And whereas Alexa was part of an investigative team of reporters who covered how marijuana legalization had impacted the country. And whereas Alexa was one of 11 reporters selected nationwide for an internship in investigative reporting ethics in Germany and Poland. And whereas Alexa, as a reporter for the Times, provided comprehensive coverage of many topics that are important to the citizens of Shreveport and Cattle Parish, including water and sewer building issues, Cattle Parish animal shelter, animal-human interest stories, domestic violence, sexual assault, proposed small cell towers, and Shreveport's street improvement plan. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convene that the City Council thanks Alexa Talamo for her services to the citizens of Shreveport as a committed, hardworking, and persistent reporter for the Shreveport Times from September 2015 to February 2018.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Since the motion, second has been already made, we vote and then have remarks.
Yes, sir.
I think everyone has voted. I know it was, uh, seconded by Flurry and seconded by Councilman Everson. Please vote if we have not. Motion carries seven, zero. We have comments by Mayor Tyler, and then we'll go to Councilman Corbin.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I have to go do a proclamation for 5:30, but I did ask you if I could say thank you to Ms. Talamo for all that she's done for the Shreveport community and good luck in your endeavors. Thank you for your service to our city. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Corbin?
Thank you, Lex, for the reporting that you've done. I know that the next chapter in your life is quite personal and look forward to hearing more about that over time, and good luck to you.
Councilman Everson?
Well, and I am just so sad to see you go, but so grateful for the work that you've done. And in a sort of, sort of interesting that we were able to acknowledge Lou earlier because his contributions to journalism are so incredible, but a little bit different in his style. And, I mean, your humanity and care for people bleeds through in your writing in such a way that it demands attention to stories that someone may otherwise turn past, and that is something that is so hard to find in a day when we are all so overwhelmed and distracted with the going zon of the world. I found myself reading things that might be unpleasant or might be difficult to know and taking the time to absorb them because of the way you wrote them and the careful way that you, you know, provided the details. And, you know, that's something that just speaks so much to your character, which just knowing you is, is also very obvious. I mean, you're just a very heartfelt person, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate it, having you in our community and always consider Shreveport a friend and a supporter.
Thank you, Councilman Everson. Councilman Flurry?
Lex, I just simply want to say that the City of Shreveport and the region, Northwest Region, has been enriched so much by having you here and what you've done, and just want to wish you the best in your endeavors.
Thank you, Councilman Flurry. Councilman Bradford?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And let me also express my appreciation to Lex and to her very aggressive investigative reporting. There was a period, Lex, before you came, that there was no reporter from the Times that would, that would frequent our meetings. And a lot of, lot of our council activities was not being reported in, through that venue. But you came and, and you, you was on it, but not only here, but throughout the government bodies. You, you've expressed a very detailed account of, of the actions of these bodies, which is needed. The city, residents, the citizens' needs to get an objective view of what's happening. You was indeed that fair and balanced entity within this, this city and within. You was indeed that fair and balanced entity within this, this city and within this parish. My best wishes for you and for the success in whatever endeavors you engage in. I just, I just hate to see you go because you were so detailed in what you were doing, and, and I don't know when you rested, but you, you was on it. You was on it, and your loss is going to be felt for a long time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Uh, Councilman Jenkins?
First and foremost, I want to thank you for giving me a bigger envelope than Jerry over here, because that means something to me personally, so I really appreciate that. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the contents are any different at this point, but I want to start there. But more importantly, you know, Lex, and I've said this to you many times, I've always appreciated how much effort you made personally to understand what we were talking about up here. And historically, over my seven years, people have covered city council, but I don't really think they worked particularly hard to understand what we were doing and what the result of the ordinance was, what we were deliberating on, and I mean, you have made that, in my opinion, concerted effort that really is appreciated, and those of us up here that don't then have to kind of re-explain what's been explained in the public domain. So, that's a unique, I would say, unique to my experience up here, and a great trait of yours professionally that I hope you will continue on in this pursuit. I know there are a lot of things that you've got going on in your life, but you're a truly gifted reporter that truly, in my opinion, the sky's the limit on what you can do, and your ability to, you know, ingratiate yourself into a community like ours that you're not from here, and became the kind of voice of downtown, I certainly think we all appreciate. And I see your boss back there, so he needs to find another gym like this somehow that's willing to spend the time and energy, really find out what we do here in cities. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jenkins. Councilwoman Lynch.
Well, first of all, let me say congratulations. I, I hated to find out by this resolution that you were leaving. Let me say, I appreciate it, Lex, that you sought to get the opinion of the entire council and not just certain council members. I really appreciate that, that at least you gave everyone the opportunity who wanted to, to weigh in on issues. I know, you know, sometimes some of my answers probably were not suitable for print. But, uh...
Amen. I tried to hold.
But, uh, but certainly, I appreciate, I always appreciated that you at least asked, you know, and I, and I did try to, at my best, to, to clean up some of my thought processes. And I also want to thank you for, you know, we're, you know, thanking you for, certainly for helping us, you know, as, as politicians and reporting on what the city, city council has been doing, but I think even larger than that, you are a big help to, to the citizens. Because a lot of times, the soundbites, the short stories, you know, it just does not cut it for them, and you were able to provide, you know, much clearer, much more, more information to them than I think even our contact sometimes with, with our, even our constituents does not allow us to have. You took the time to really break things down in a way that they could understand it, which actually makes our job a lot easier. You know, when you would write stories, there was a lot less, there were a lot nicer comments, Councilwoman Everson. When Lex would do a story, there were a lot more positive comments on the Facebook page.
And, and or thoughtful comments?
Yes, thoughtful comments, because people understood. I mean, it was so in-depth, and it was so detailed, and it was so easy to understand, that people, I just think, felt, you know, good about having the information. And so, thank you, and, and I certainly want to thank you on behalf of my constituents because, you know, you did a couple of stories that brought voice to some of the concerns that they had, and I really appreciate you for that as well. So, much success in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lynch. Again, thank you, Alexa, for, as Councilwoman said, breaking things down for the citizens, especially, you know, some who really didn't, who couldn't make it to the meetings, or who could not, who did not have access to social media. Of course, they got the paper, and the comments and, and the stories that you wrote really helped, and it, breaking it down really gave them a, a better understanding of what went on, or what was going on potentially here on the council. So I just wanted to say thank you again for that, and I wish you the best on your future endeavors. Councilman Corbin, I mean, uh, Jenkins, with anything else?
Certainly, she has the opportunity at Mike here to say a few words, and hopefully, we'd love to have your thoughts at this point.
Sure. Well, I pass out thank you notes, because I'm sure it wasn't always fun to be at the end of my endless media, media inquiries, or the center of them. So I do really appreciate, both from the administration and from the council, all of your thoughts and your comments. The constituents do care about what you think, and I think they're very lucky that they have elected officials who care. And I do want to say that when I became a government reporter, I did not want to be a government reporter. It was not something I thought I'd be interested in or good at, but you all made me care. The more that I started reporting on city issues, the more I started hearing from you, sometimes at ten-thirty at night, sometimes at six-thirty in the morning, as well as from the community, it, it proved to me that Shreveport is a community that deeply cares about quality of life, and I have been extremely blessed to be here. I checked this morning, and I've actually been able to tell more than a thousand stories since I touched down about two and a half years ago, and so, the community has really kept me going, and I just really appreciate everything that the city and that you as through the council has done for me, and I am very grateful for the time that I've been able to be here.
Okay. Councilwoman Lynch.
Lex, one more thing. I want to thank you for never, ever printing a fake news story. I, I really, I really, girl, you have no idea how much I appreciate that. You didn't, you did not say the one time that I lived in Baton Rouge, and I really appreciate that, because it's not true. But, but thank you for, for, you know, being that small light of having, still having integrity in journalism. Thank you. Okay.
If I could, from a personal note and just a, and another way, also just thank you for being such a, a nice per, just a kind person in your, in your non-professional life, but just who you are. And as a happy note, about six months ago, when my father was hit by a car, it was, I mean, it was a tough moment, and Lex wrote the sweetest note, and it meant a lot, and today, he stood for the first time since, and, and it was really neat, so just wanted to share that.
Congrats.
Thanks for sharing that. Councilman, uh, Everson. Uh, Councilman Bradford, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my last comment, Lex, in your, I definitely mentioned that Elster is here. Somebody's here.
He's great.
Okay, anyway, no, no, I, I use, I use a term that I heard years ago, I think it was a hotel that said, and I use it with my subordinates when they leave, uh, want to, want to try something different, and God has, you said, directed you into doing something different. Always tell them, I'm leaving the light on for you. So leave the light on for it, Lex, okay? Thank you, Lex.
One last thing. Councilwoman Lynch said she didn't live in Baton Rouge. Is there a difference between live and reside? Just let me know that. Just send me that. She let me know.
It's a fake council narrative. Don't live or reside.
Thank you so much, Lex, and we appreciate you.
Good luck.
Mr. Thompson, would you continue, please?
There was one resolution that was added. It was resolution number nineteen of twenty eighteen, a resolution to welcome Dr. Juanita Archer and Dr. Claudia L. Thomas to the city of Shreveport, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Did we want to remove, did we talk about removing seventeen yesterday?
I think we're not there yet.
Seventeen, that's correct. We're not there yet. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Not yet. Not quite there.
Been moved by the chair, seconded by the vice chair. End of discussion. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Chairman, we're now under introduction of resolutions. Resolution number seventeen, yesterday, the administration said that they wanted to remove that from the agenda.
That's correct.
A motion to remove it from the agenda will be in order.
Second. Moved by Councilman, the vice chair, seconded by Councilman Corbin. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero.
There's one other resolution to be introduced. It's resolution number eighteen, approving Inferno Manufacturing for participation in the industrial tax exemption program.
Second.
Removed by Councilman Corbin, seconded by the vice chair. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Just as a reminder, once we introduce this, we will call an infrastructure committee meeting.
Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Chairman, we now have the amendment by Councilwoman Lynch prepared, and we could go back to resolution number seven.
I want to make, let's see, an amendment, amendment number one to resolution number seven, two thousand eighteen, to change the expiration date to a date specific, to expire on November the twenty-eighth of twenty eighteen.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by the chair. End of discussion. Please vote. On the amendment. Motion carries seven zero.
Now a motion to adopt the resolution as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Lynch. Please vote. That motion carries five, two.
Five, four, and two against?
Five, four, two against, yes.
We're now into introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to February the twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen. Ordinance number nine amends and reenacts certain provisions of chapter twenty-six, article six, division three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shreveport relative to architectural and engineering services. Ordinance ten declares a citizen intention to acquire full ownership to certain adjudicated properties for community development. Ordinance number eleven will close and abandon a portion of Sweet Leaf Avenue in Providence Phase Two units G and H subdivisions in section twenty, Township sixteen north, Range thirteen west. Ordinance twelve will revise certain provisions of chapter ten of the Code of Ordinances, specifically revising section ten dash eighty-four relative to requiring physical separation from other business operations of sales of beverages of high alcoholic content liquors for consumption off premises and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Resolution number thirteen will revise certain provisions of chapter twenty-seven of seventy-eight of the Code of Ordinances, specifically revising section seventy-eight dash three relative to requiring on-site project information to be required for projects in the city public right-of-way and on city-owned property and otherwise provide with respect thereto. There were also two that were added. I'll have to go back and find. Ordinance number fourteen to create and establish the intersection of Santa Fe Drive and Norwood Drive as a stop intersection, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. An ordinance fifteen to create and establish no-through truck route on Santa Fe Drive between Fern Avenue and Scary Drive, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Move introductions, Jim.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bradford, and seconded by Councilman Corbin. Any discussion on that? Please vote. Motion carries seven, see.
We're now into ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance number three amends a twenty eighteen budget for the community development special revenue fund.
Second. Moved by Councilman Everson, seconded by Councilman Corbin. Any discussions? Please vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Ordinance number four amends a city's twenty eighteen grant special revenue fund budget.
Second.
Moved by Councilman, motion by Councilman Everson, seconded by Councilman Flurry. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Ordinance number five adding, amending, and reenacting certain provisions of chapter ten of the code relative to revising and adding new definitions and allowing certain business types to apply for and obtain.
Submit.
And attach microbrewery or micro-distillery.
Is this expanding my options? Is this expanding my options?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
You don't drink beer.
Motion by Councilman Everson, seconded by the vice chair. Any other discussion seen done? Please vote.
I'm sorry.
Motion carries seven zero.
Ordinance number six amends a twenty eighteen street special revenue fund budget.
Submit.
Second.
So moved, moved by Councilman Everson, seconded by the vice chair. Any discussion?
Is Light Street in Broadmoor a lot?
It's, it's not, because it's really Captain Shree, neighborhood association.
It really is kind of a feeder road into the, it's a connector.
A connector. They're used.
It honestly doesn't really have any residential traffic on the park, that's other than the access to a gated community and apartment.
That motion carries seven zero.
Ordinance seven amends a twenty eighteen capital improvements budget.
Submit.
Second.
Then moved by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Everson. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Ordinance number eight is a zoning matter, case number C dash one dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the northeast corner of Hearn Avenue and Essex Street from R-17 Single Family Residential District to C-2 corridor Commercial District.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by the vice chair. Any discussion on that?
This one was a little confusing to me, but you're, you're good with it?
No, he explained it yesterday.
Yeah, I heard the, I heard that, it just, in my head, it was still, because that's right, it kind of backs up the neighborhoods, right, but it's on, all right. So C-three, C-two.
Is Mr. Sweeney gone? Basically, he wanted a C-three, but what he was saying that he potentially could develop it as, he could do under C-one or C-two.
Yeah.
And I think as a compromise, they, you know, allowed him to do C-two without being too intense, and felt C-three was just going to be too intense.
Yeah.
And so, through the process, once he decides what he wants to do, they have a process to deal with that, so I think we'll be okay.
Cool.
Please vote. And that carries seven zero.
Mr. Chairman, there is no table legislation. There are no appeals to be voted on, except the, we have a special meeting for a denial of an alcohol appeal, but that's in a special meeting, not in this meeting. We're now into reports from offices, boards, and committees.
Do we have any reports from officer, boards, or committee? We had a short meeting today, property standards, and I think the main question was about rental How could we, or how could we not have those properties, especially like the ones with the special numbers on them, the... like the ones with the special numbers on them, uh, that's posted for rent, to have those houses inspected, uh, somehow, uh, before being able to rent out, and I don't know if that would be through property standards or some other body, um, my hope is property standards, so, that was just a discussion on today.
Does he, does he have an opinion on that?
He's getting, uh, but he's getting something, uh, in writing for us, uh, to go by.
Anyone else? I don't think so.
You need a chair for that new committee that we might have to.
I was going to ask you about that, ma'am.
I wonder if I'm not someone who cleared her schedule for that.
I'll go definitely ask you about that. Any additional communications from the administration?
No, Ms. Chairman.
You just skipped the clerk's report.
Well, I know what.
And he wasn't going to say anything, he's quiet as a mouse when he saw it.
Well, he said that we didn't even have anything else, but I asked him, but he said he didn't have anything else.
No, the, uh, the mayor's appointments, you've already met them and heard from them and read their resumes, uh, and I mentioned that we're going to have a special meeting immediately after this meeting ends.
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Just a clerical note, we may want to correct, before we get to the minutes, the Shreveport implementation and redevelopment agencies from redeployment agency.
Actually, redeployment is not even spelled correctly. I think somebody's auto, auto, auto text filled out.
Yeah, I don't know what that word is, my point is, I don't even think that's a word.
My predictive text writes things that are definitely not words all the time.
We'll make a note of that.
I think we're down low.
Additional communication, Mr. Chairman?
Any, any additional communication from any council?
I, I would like to ask the gentleman from the Times to come at us, if he will. The editor? Jeff? I should, I should know his name, I don't know.
What's his name?
Yes, sir, I, I would like, thank you. Just state your name, please, for the record.
My name's Jeff Gauder, I'm the executive editor of the Shreveport Times.
Okay, yeah, I, I've known editors over the years, I, how long you been editor now?
I've been here a year and a half.
Have you? Okay, good, good. I want to, I want to thank you for coming down and accompanying Lex, uh, she's been a great, uh, asset to the Times in regards to her reporting, especially covering this body, and I was wondering, um, is there any anticipation of her replacement to cover, uh, this body in the future?
We will replace her, there'll be, um, an interim plan and then a long-term plan once we hire somebody.
So we will be continual getting, getting, uh...
And if y'all never adjourn tonight, she can't quit, so.
It's tomorrow, it's tomorrow, huh? Okay, so, is that an idea? Can we just, uh, huh? Now, we don't have to adjourn, we can say, what's the term that count, that the Congress use?
Well, you can get up and read the dictionary from cover to cover on one of these, type deals of the Dr. Seuss or whatever they, they do, but, uh, sometimes we got to go home,
okay. But anyway, I, I want to thank you and wanted to meet you, but, uh, but you are accompanying Lex, uh...
Thank you, Councilman Bradford.
...to, to the job she did.
I appreciate it, all that you, that y'all have to say about her, it's all, it's all true and more, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, now we're down to, no one else, now we're down to public comments.
Okay, um, Amy Sen, please. And, to be honest, I, I think there are three of y'all speaking on the same matter, so if y'all want to move towards the front. Eric's keeping a very low profile in the back, it's a little unlike you, I, I don't know how you thought you were going to get away with that.
Hi, I'm Amy Sen, I reside at one zero three zero five L. B. Road, Shreveport. Um, I'm here today, um, because there is a matter that has gone unnoticed, um, uh, I have put in five records, public records requests to, um, local agencies, and, um, actually, I've received, um, numerous, uh, correspondence with Willie Bradford's office, um, and a timely matter, the City of Shreveport office, um, requesting, uh, the auction contract that the City of Shreveport has with Lawler Auctions. Um, I'm, I'm sure you are aware that of the Inquisitor Newspaper, and I have actually been in the Inquisitor Newspaper several times, um, and it's been very negative for me and my family, um...
Cue pictures, though.
Well, no, well, the last one wasn't that great, but I appreciate it, um, it is a personal issue, and, um, I want to plant the seed in maybe the city council's head about, um, I know that the contract that I just received from the city attorney's office, um, has expired December, and, uh, I would like to maybe ask the city council on reconsidering, uh, maybe finding another auction to provide, um, the property of the city, and maybe, I know that there are other auctions locally, and I'm not sure, I'm still waiting on, uh, the, uh, some more of the public records to, um, she asked for an extension and that was okay, because of the extent that I was, of the things that I was asking for, um, so I want to maybe ask that in the future, maybe look forward, uh, to another auction that the city can use, and maybe, because I do know that the auction funds the Inquisitor Newspaper, and, and, uh, we, you know, we don't need that anymore, and, and, uh, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous, this issue is, uh, is, is not, um, something I want to talk about often, but it's very negative on our community, and we need, you know, especially with what's going on now with our city, all the negative stuff going on, you know, we need some positive going on, and, and we just, we, we need to get rid of this, and, and, um, it's just, it's not good, so maybe you guys can re, you know, reconsider on who you use for, you know, the future for your auctions. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, would you like to go next?
Constable Eric Hatfield, I reside at one zero three zero five L. B. Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, and I'll just make mine very short. One, Councilwoman Lynch, you had a very good point when she thanks Lex for not printing fake news and things of that nature. None of this stuff has anything to do with the city council as far as the newspaper, the Inquisitor Newspaper, but as Amy said, what, what does have an effect on it is that with, the Inquisitor Newspaper, to my knowledge, generates zero profit, in fact, it costs money, it costs, he loses money on it. Without the money, without the proceeds from the auctions that are done with the local municipalities, with the sheriff's office, with the DA's office and all these entities, without them supporting this auction, the auction couldn't support this paper. And this paper's gone after, I mean, possibly some people that may be sitting here today or some people behind me, and it's just, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's one of those things that goes unnoticed if you're not in it, but I, um, myself and a few others have definitely been in there a lot more than a few times, and that's fine, so I, I, I get it, I mean, I'm an elected official and I get it. Amy's not an elected official, my, my, my young minor children are not elected officials, so they shouldn't be in it, so those things are not a matter that's up for anything with the, the council, but I do ask that you reconsider, we've been contacted by other auctioneers and other, uh, auction companies that said they do wish to do business with the City of Shreveport and other agencies, and I just, uh, I'm asking for your consideration and other people that may be trying to conduct a more ethical and, um, moral business here in Shreveport, so that we don't continue to make national, negative, national news. And that's really it, just, I mean, I just ask, consider it and, you know, just consider what we're asking. Thank you very much for your time.
Certainly. Uh, Mr. Kramer?
I guess I'll play me for last. How we doing? My name's Robert Kramer, I own the Kramer Furniture. I'd like to see y'all get rid of Danny Lawler, please. I know, okay. The man's a thief and a liar, and I'm sure you don't need him. And, uh, I'll give you... This is, I got one to the Shreveport, I don't know where it's at, but this one, dude. Danny Lawler sent this, uh, letter to the Cat-O Sheriff in, uh, two thousand and seven, it's dated two thousand. He backdated this contract, trying to throw me off what I was doing, and you wonder how I can prove it's what it is, and that is because... Hang on a minute, please, ma'am. Everything on this contract right here, what he charged and everything, is what he charged in two thousand and seven and not in two thousand. And here's a list right here, here's his contract, two, eight, four, oh, one. This is what he was charging then, and this is what he charged in two thousand and seven. He backdated this thing, but that's not all. Uh, I, I don't know how in the world y'all could hold an auction without a contract. It's not heard of. Anyway, y'all held full auction that you didn't even have a contract. Anybody, nobody, okay? Uh, one of them is five, four, two thousand and five, it was for forty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and seventy cents. The other one was, uh, twelve, two, uh, twelve, two, two oh five, it was for eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six and three cents. The other one is eight, three, two oh six, and it was for two hundred and eighty thousand, fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents. And, uh, the other one was three, thirty-one, two thousand and seven, it was forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty. And y'all had no contracts for them. Y'all sold city merchandise on a verbal contract. And the city attorney gave me all of this, so I'm sure he's right. Nobody has no answer.
Uh, sir, just so that we're clear, I, I don't speak for myself, but this is the first I've heard of any of this, so...
I'm sorry, sir, I can't hear you.
So we're clear, this is the first, I believe, most of us have, or any of us have heard of this, so, you know, certainly we're going to consult with our city attorney and find out about that.
May I walk over where I can hear you?
Sir, okay, I'll say it pretty loud, because I can talk pretty clearly.
Do what, sir? I'm, I'm hard of hearing, I'm about eighty years old, but I still hear.
Okay. I'll, I'll come down and talk to you. Um, let me just, uh, see who asked, is there anybody else on this item on the agenda?
Can I just ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly. I don't think he's going to be able to hear you.
No, no, I want to ask the administration, uh, before we go to the next subject, what's the process of selecting entrepreneurs, Mr. 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 Administration?
Yeah, I'm gonna...
You want to yield?
I'm going to yield to the attorney on this one.
Okay.
I mean, it goes to the same contracting process, it's professional service, um, I will say that the only interaction I've had with Mr. Kramer, I think, was in two thousand and fifteen, uh, there was a public records request that I responded to, so the documents he's referring to are likely from the response to that public records request several years ago, uh, I've not had any interaction with him in recent time, but, um, I know we are responding to Ms. Sen's, I believe it's Ms. Sen, uh, her public records request, um, but it goes through our ordinary process with professional services.
What is that, though?
Is that RFP?
Uh, I believe there's an R, RFP that's issued for, when it's, when it's time to do so, so I'll follow up with, um, the CAO to see if it's apparently time to, to do, to renew a contract or to find an auctioneer, I'm not certain if that is the only contract for auctioneers here, I don't know that to be a fact yet, but I'd like to do some investigating on that.
Mr. Chairman, from the administrative perspective, we'll, we'll certainly follow up on this, uh, and provide the council with all the information regarding the current contract and any stipulation for an additional contract in those times of expiration and when we might be going out for another one.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
And if y'all interested in the total of that full auction come to four hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the reason they done that, so he could get the ten percent buyer premium.
Okay. Thank you for that.
The city, the city don't need to be doing this kind of business. I got a lot of respect for the City of Shreveport.
Okay.
And I don't believe y'all know what's going on, uh, I got a letter from Chief Whitehorn here somewhere. Blackland Whitehorn was chief of police for the City of Shreveport. The city did not have a written contract with Lawler Auction after the auction held October the sixteenth, two thousand and four, instead they operated on a verbal contract.
Okay.
That's from Chief Whitehorn.
Okay, Mr. Kramer?
This agreement allow, uh, Lawler to charge their buyer fee, uh, for two reasons.
Yes, sir, I understand that you couldn't hear me up there?
Yes.
Um, this documentation, has, have you provided it to our city attorney?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, could I ask, they, you do that, I don't know if you have copies of it, or you could send it in the mail, or we take these, whichever way is more convenient for you.
Okay, that sounds good to me, because I haven't been able to get nowhere in all these years, and I think it's about time somebody do something.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you to do that, this is our public comments period?
Yes.
So, you know, you had allocated a certain amount of time for this, so if you, do you need his address, or do you want to leave this with him?
I'll make you have a copy, uh, Mr. Bradford got everything probably beside this letter here from Chief Whitehorn, he don't have it, and he don't have these, uh, ones here that, uh, he backdated from two thousand and seven to, to two thousand.
Okay, so if you could provide that to us, and then we'll get, looking into it.
I wish you would, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Like I say, I've been raised here in Shreveport all my life, and I don't want to see this mess going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. I brought today a doubloon, and I caught others, six others at the Highland Parade, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone gets to see this.
That sure is a cool doubloon, Sammy.
Yeah, it is, and I caught six others at the Highland Parade. After Sunday school and morning worship at Springs of Grace Baptist Church, I had a good lunch at Line Avenue Burger King and went to the Highland Parade at Noel Methodist Church where I was standing, looking forward to a good parade. I did get a few beads, two hot dogs, Cracker Jack, corn chips, three mini Frisbees, and a plastic bag with the medallion in it, and at the very top it said Crude of Justina T twenty-six on it, on the bottom it said Havana, and it looks like two people were dancing. But I, I really enjoyed getting all of that, and of course, like this, like I said, I got six Spanish coins, which are doubloons, and the others were so messy out there on the road, I didn't bother to take them. I did, I see, I found one today, as I said, to take home, I'll be doing that, and I have about maybe altogether fifteen Spanish coins. It was a great day except for people who were throwing beads back at the floats, there were several people that were doing this, and it was very inappropriate and ridiculous. The situation needs to be enforced at once. If anyone's from now on caught throwing beads or cups or anything else back at the floats and hitting people with them, they need to be either arrested or removed from the parade immediately. We cannot have this. I suggest this be taken care of right away, and it needs to be enforced, if anyone will take the time to do that. We can't have this, it's ridiculous, it's inappropriate, stuff that's going on, and somebody is bound to get hurt, so that's why I make a suggestion that this needs to be enforced, where people are not supposed to throw things at the floats or hit people on the floats when they throw them back, because somebody in the process always winds up getting hurt, and if, if you can enforce this situation to be taken care of, I really would appreciate that.
Should we, should we see that they give all their extra beads to you?
I'm not bead desperate. Now you're going to make me start thinking about those two TV antennas that got married, Dean Bass.
Mr. Albert Brown, please.
I'm going to use that one, Sammy.
He said patiently throughout, so, on the front row.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor and House, my name is Albert Brown, five five one East eighty-second Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, and y'all, I got a reputation down there, y'all, oh, here come the open door. Uh, first of all, I want to give kudos to Brother Corbett and Brother Jenkins, how y'all, uh, when I called y'all about those hoes in the street, y'all jumped right on them, I thank you all, me and Brother Corbett just went over there a few minutes ago... Me and Brother Corbett just went over there a few minutes ago, found out that, uh, some situations, so she's looking at that. But my main, but I got another concern now, is that I got a Department of Standard lady. I've been talking to her and talking to her about these, these old houses in the neighborhood, and she putting the, she's putting the signs up, but it's like, you know, we got a lot of trash and a lot of stuff around there and everything, and been talking to the Department of Standard, and she says she was going to take care of that for us, and she's, you know, I know it was the holidays, so, you know, but it's, they still sitting there. I'm trying to say, okay, now, Ms. Waldman, let's put a little fire on you now, you know? And I know it's on, right there on Eighty-Second Street, too, Brother Corbett. We right there by the, on Eighty-Second, right there, throwing here on Eighty-Second, uh, the, uh, there was, there was some hoes right there, too, because, because you could certainly look at that. And then, too, I know I talked to y'all once before about those young men, young people out there with those, uh, little go-cars and stuff like that. You know, they still over there in Shady Grove over there riding, and I, I'm just praying that nothing don't happen, y'all. I'm just praying that nothing don't happen, because they think that you cannot ride that stuff on linwood, you know? And that's the reason why I'm looking at that. And I talked to, I just talked to the chief and back there, and so that I can get Brother Corbett, Brother Jenkins, and City Grove, Eden Garden, and Shady Grove. I wish like to have those three city councilmen, could I see you all three together at one time, so I can talk to y'all about the situation? Because I'm the National Presidential Association now, and they got me over it. And so, I would like to see all three of you all, plus the chief, all three of y'all together at one time, if I can.
Okay.
I still got forty-nine seconds. And, uh, no. And Brother Brown, you told me you was going to call me, and I'm waiting on my phone call.
Well, go ahead and use the forty-nine second.
I was talking real fast, but guys, I really appreciate you all and, um, everybody, and like I said, and we, I love my city, and, and I want us to, you know, try to make this city back look, well, looking good. Like, getting all these old houses out here. They're not, they're not, if they're not there, get them out of here. I'll put some paint on them or do something, just don't let them sit there.
One thing that could be happening, and it may or may not be, I don't know the case specifically, but I'll say, I do know that my district also has a lot of...
Yeah, you, I got a house over there.
...property standards cases, and so I'm very familiar with the process.
Yeah, Hollywood Heights, yeah.
What I'll say is that, um, the way that property standards process works, if the property owner is cooperative, obviously you see results quickly. If the property owner is not cooperative, they do have due process, they can slow down the enforcement possibility. So, that could be what's happening there, is you may have somebody who's, for instance, like, the law requires that we give proper notification, and so we have to send like a certified letter. And, uh, and if they choose not to receive a certified letter by just ignoring it or not being there or signing for it, you know, that can delay these processes a lot. So, sometimes that kind of thing might be what slows it down, but, but, you know, it may not be the case in this, but I will say that I've, I've run into that in the past. And it's not that the guys at the property standards office aren't doing everything that they can in those instances. It's that you've got uncooperative property owners, and unfortunately, we've got a lot of uncooperative property owners. Just to, for context, for sharing.
Well, can I, uh, well, can I get my city councilmen to come one time? I can meet all you guys at one time, you know, one time, if I don't, if y'all mind? Okay. Thank you all.
Reverend Brown, Reverend Brown, the Councilman Everson has Hollywood. I have Hollywood Heights.
You have Hollywood Heights?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I need to see you, because I got a house over there.
Let me, uh, let me give you some of these flyers for the upcoming sport train meeting about the bus rides.
Okay.
I want to give these to you.
Okay. Can I call the...
Yes, uh-huh.
That's networking.
And if you can, you know, just give a little extra word over in that area about, about the upcoming meetings. One is going to be at A.B. Palmer Park, okay?
You have a meeting at A.B. Palmer?
Yes, sir, on the date that's on there.
Okay, because see, I'm the PAC president over there.
Oh, okay.
So, okay.
All right. Good. Okay, thank you. You help us spread the word about that meeting. Help us spread the word about that meeting.
Yes, I'll give this to Baron at tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Bill Weiner.
I'm Bill Weiner. Nothing has changed in the last two hours. I have four items. I'm going to give them to you by title, and then we can talk about them as far as time is concerned. Yesterday, I tried to talk about cross-bio, and they said it was, should be talked about today. Okay. It appeared from the discussion yesterday that there are developers coming to town and talking to the mayor with proposals and to lobby some council people. We need to establish criteria and standards on what would be acceptable on that historic open space that is so critical for the downtown transition of the CBD into residential. And so, we need to establish these rules, and if the developers can meet them, talk to them, if not, send them away. And number two, I talked about bike paths, that we need to look at the big picture and establish a network of where we're going, and we can do segments of it as needed, as money is available. Three, probably one of the most important things, Sweetport does not have a vision statement. I've lived in other cities that do. They revise it like every five years, and they'll hold six months of hearings of citizens to look at various issues, housing, roads, parks, et cetera, and they establish what the vision is for, what, for the next five years, and it's revisited. Sometimes it's put into law, and sometimes it's an advisory document. And the last thing I want to address, is Sweetport is dying. We all know that. There are more houses for sale in high end and low end everywhere. People are leaving. I know professors at our colleges who are trying to find jobs other place. We've got a problem. There are ways to look at it, to define it, and then, once it's defined, we can address it. And I'm going to ask you to think about having a special meeting somewhere in the future, thirty days, sixty days, with your group and the commission and others to look at the problems. We have too many departments that are doing their things when they should be working with the same goal. I could give you examples, but I don't have time. But thank you, and I hope you can consider all these items.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, do you know who's, who hosts the next intergovernmental meeting?
We do.
We do?
Yes.
No, I don't have anything for you, sir.
I must have been perfect.
Great.
Picture perfect.
Pastor Mays.
He's been hiding from me the past, I didn't see him, thought he left.
State the name and address, Pastor Mays.
Pastor Mays, ten three nine eight Buckle Road. Just very briefly, I want to, I would like to know, where are the mayor at on the signing of the disparity study that was permitted before this council had passed? Here's the problem with Sweetport. I spoke to a lady at LSU just recently. She said, I'm getting out of this place. You have good people like myself and others to come down and, and people that sat on the council that try to do what's best for the whole city of Sweetport. But Sweetport is still living in the past. It's still living in a time where this group of demographic of people prosper and go up, and we leave these demographic of people down. We got to come out of that. Unless we come up together as, as a city, people are going to continue to leave this place. They ever moved to Bowser, this young lady said, I'm getting out of here, I got my nurses, I just can't do it no more here. Because something is wrong. And I've been saying this for years and got criticized by some of it, but I'm going to keep saying it. It don't take for me to know that the house is on fire. I just smell the smoke. That was my whole purpose of coming down here. It don't take an alarm to go off, it just takes me smelling smoke, and that's a guarantee that the house is on fire. We got crumbling infrastructure in this city. We have, um, police misconduct and never be addressed, because you either for us or you're against us. There's income disparity in this city, that a group of people go up and others remain where they at. And so, we got a crime is taking place. And I asked you guys a while back, I said, what is the root of the problem? What would cause people to commit crimes? Well, it's a lack of what? It's a lack of resource, but we don't never want to get to the root of the problem. We just want to let the problem escalate. And I said, eventually, it's going to go into the suburbs, and then we're going to have to address some of these problems. Now, cars are being broken into, and the, the people in those communities over there that have those very expensive homes, they say, we're not going to tolerate this. So, but Pastor Mays has been saying this for the longest as it relates to Queensburg, Allendale, Cooper Road, and some of those impoverished neighborhoods. Unless we all come up together, then we all going to fall. Sweetport would not make it unless we all work together. So, the bottom line is, and, and, and I got a little time, the bottom line is, is that I am tired of hearing people say what needs to be done. They come to the different churches, they make the good speeches, they say, well, I, I'm going to be the best politician to work for the whole city of Sweetport. I just got to speaking with John McFitch earlier today, and John say, when I went in as a freshman, uh, senator, United States Senator, he said, when I went in as a freshman senator, everything you said, I saw. And it's sad that you have nobody thinking about the whole of Louisiana, and people that are not thinking about the whole of Sweetport, Louisiana. And that's why we are headed in the direction that we going in. And I, I asked the mayor, I hope she done signed off on the disparity study, so that we can get some real numbers behind who's being left behind and who's not. So, it's not hard to figure out when you are not living in these impoverished neighborhoods. It's not hard to see that there is a problem when you look at your window and your street stalls fix, and you're able to walk your kids down the streets, and you ain't hearing the shootings and all that stuff. My son just got shot just recently, almost died. And you know why? Because he was at a store, C and C, and he got shot. So, we, we thought, we was getting prepared for a funeral, he got shot before, wind up getting shot again. Guy tried to rob him. So, either there's, either we, and I'm tired of people trying to pacify black people. Don't pacify me no more. Because we either going to do this thing together, or Sweetport going to continue to go down. Some of my friends in Bowser, they over there saying, hey, man, you know, all the things Sweetport don't want, we don't get. I said, you know, y'all just right across the bridge. They say, either Sweetport going to do it the way it needs to be done? And there shouldn't be a degree of fear, because God has not given us the spirit of fear, but a power, love, and a sound mind. So, why are we so fearful? I don't understand it. And I know you all have a hard job. I respect your job. But you are, you are servants to serve the citizens of this community. And you might not agree with everything that goes on, but you have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of this city. We don't have to be fearful anymore. We don't have to be looking over our shoulder. We don't have to worry about who's going to contribute the most to my campaign, so that's who I need to help. No, you have the whole constituency, white and black, whatever color they are. But, but thank you all for the time. I hadn't been coming down here much, and my wife had the flu, but I reach out to different councilmen to ask them for certain things that we need to have done in the African-American community. I'm not going to go to any parades. I stopped going. You know why? Why I stopped going to parades? And I'm going to take my seat after this. I stopped going to parades. And the reason why I stopped going to parades, I still, I still promote people to go, but I stopped going, because I can't go to a parade and throw beads, hoop and holler, like Sweetport is really going in the right direction. When I'm looking on TV, young black men shooting one another, infrastructure going down, and it's not the police department problem, full problem. It's all of our problem. So, I appreciate you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you, Vice Chairman. You've been here a long time doing, doing work, and I appreciate all of y'all council members. But unless we work together and come together in this city and see that the whole Sweetport has to work together and not leave a certain demographic behind, preferably African-Americans, if we can't, we leave them behind, then this whole city going to fail. I guarantee you that.
Thank you, Pastor Mays.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Samaria Kennedy. And I apologize if I pronounced that incorrectly. What's that? I'm not sure he... Now, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Samaria Kennedy. I live at three nineteen West Eighty-Third Street, seven...
Make sure you speak, speak into the microphone.
My name is Samaria Kennedy. I live at three nineteen West Eighty-Third, seven, oh, six. I'm calling, I mean, talking to you today to stop world hunger. You know that about crossbreeding fruits and vegetables, you can come up with different types of vegetables and fruits by crossbreeding fruits and vegetables together, like flowers. They come up different type of flowers each and every day with crossbreeding plants. So, you make different strands of plants, less like marijuana. They came out with Cushing, Perp, and all these different types of drugs. So, if you crossbreed grapes with apples, then you can make grapes and apples, you know, a fruit. And then I have my, uh, John Fleming Ten Year Plan that I gave to each and every one of the council members, which we can take to Congress or to Donald Trump and talk to him about it, and try to do something for the city and for the world, or at least for the United States.
I think we...
He sent us...
He sent the email to, I think, to, I know I got one. I think he sent one to everyone about world hunger and his ten year, John Fleming's Ten Year Plan. She didn't get it.
No, I'm just trying to remember. I can't, I can't think of it. When, about when was that? Do you remember?
Um, the John Fleming letter was given to the mayor, and I believe every congressman. I went to the office myself. I can't remember exactly when I did it.
Okay.
But it was like a little while ago. And then I gave him the world hunger thing, because...
But I'm saying, you sent it to the council?
Yes, ma'am. I came up and she printed it out and put it on their email.
Oh, okay, okay.
She emailed it to us.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of remember. Um, okay, okay.
Just look for it from Mr. Kennedy. It's Samaria Kennedy.
Okay, all right.
So, exactly what you think we can do to help you?
Um, I feel that y'all can get the communication to DC, because DC, I done did a lot of things there. I have actually got a city back from ISIS. You probably just want to know exactly, but like, if you talk to anybody in DC, they all know me by now.
Okay. All right, we'll research it, and hopefully we'll get back with you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
I think we are... That's all we got, sir. Time for German and then restart.
This meeting is now adjourned. I ain't going to hit it that hard this time.